This March 10, 2022, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Lake Braddock Singers under the direction of Andrea Harmon. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I know we've got a lot of Bruin fans, not only in the audience, but here at the board table, so I'm just going to be one of many board members who represent Lake Braddock to say that was outstanding. And to family in the audience, thank you for sharing your talented children with us. And to their music teacher, wow, what a way to start a meeting.
Thank you. Certification of closed-meeting compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-37D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on March 10, 2022, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening closed, were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Omech, seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with Mr. Frisch and Ms. Kizgimara away from the table. Ms. Kizgimara has submitted a written request to virtually attend this evening's business meeting due to a personal conflict. Mr. Frisch has submitted a written request to virtually attend this evening's business meeting due to a medical conflict. All those in favor of approving Ms. Kizgimara and Mr. Frisch's request, please raise your hands. And that is unanimous with everyone at the table. Agenda item 2.03, announcements. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Phyllis Pajardo, Superintendent, City of Fairfax County Schools and School Board Members, Chairman Carolyn Pitches, and Ms. Toby Sorensen. Oh, and Mr. Mitch Sederfield. Thank you for being here with us tonight. If you'd like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that's being discussed tonight, then information can be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcps.edu/schoolboard/BoardDocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcps.edu/tv/ch99. Item 5.06, a word of contract on lowering of elementary school architectural and engineering services, has been removed from tonight's agenda and added as action at the request of a school board member. I call on Mr. Chattery for an announcement.
National Foreign Language Week. The week of March 6 through 12, 2022, has been designated as National Foreign Language Week. The Alpha Mu Gamma Foreign Language Honor Society has sponsored the National Foreign Language Week since 1957, and the theme for 2022 is "Celebrate Humanity Through Language." FCPS, in its secondary programs, currently offers 11 languages: ASL, Arabic, Chinese, French, German, Japanese, Korean, Latin, Spanish, Russian, and Vietnamese. FCPS is committed to cultivating global citizens who engage and connect with the world in the five Cs of world readiness standards: communication, cultures, connections, comparisons, and communities. National Sleep Awareness Week. The National Sleep Foundation is celebrating its annual Sleep Awareness Week, March 13 through 19, 2022, to raise awareness of the health benefits of sleep and to recognize the importance of sleep as a crucial measure of overall health and well-being. The National Sleep Foundation believes that the value of a good night's sleep, which carries into one's day to improve not just health, but mood, productivity, and overall quality of life. Sleep needs vary across ages and are especially impacted by lifestyle and health. To determine how much sleep you need, please visit sleep.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chattery. Agenda item 2.04, resolution honoring VSPA Equity in Education Month. I call on Mr. Frisch for the resolution.
Whereas inequities in schools have become an increasingly significant challenge in the United States and Virginia, and whereas the majority of school-aged kids are children of color, and over 50% of public school students qualify for subsidized meals, and whereas we recognize that factors including but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status have a demonstrated history of impacting the educational opportunities provided to a student, and whereas the promise of public education is for every child to be successful in school and life, and whereas it is important for Virginia families, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges as a school community, and whereas the VSPA has established a task force on student and schools in challenging environments to make recommendations and to stay at the forefront of discussions on equity in Virginia schools, whereas we recognize that inequities in resources, including educational setting, supplies, technology, and building impedes student learning, now therefore be it resolved, the Fairfax County School Board recognizes the month of March 2022 as VSPA Equity in Education Month, with the intention that educational equity, best practices, and programming be discussed in Virginia schools, communities, and classrooms during that time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kizgimara. Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak to the resolution?
Yes, just briefly, because I know we're going to have a long night. I think the motion speaks to the value of equity in education and the work that this board has been doing for many years now to advance that charge, and it is a charge that I hope we will continue to pursue in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Kizgimara, would you like to speak?
Yes. I'll shorten what I wanted to say. I want to thank the VSPA, the Virginia School Board Association, for providing the language of this resolution. I thank them for validating the need to focus on equity. I'm happy to second this motion because I have a simple message. Equity has no color, race, gender, language, or specific definition that defines a group. It requires us to look at data and make the best decisions that we can to serve every child by name and by need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kizgimara. Mr. Dernat Kofax?
Yes, I would like to make some comments. They're a bit long, but I ask your indulgence. I want to talk one about when I was first elected to this board, I talked about the need to provide equitable opportunities for all students. Equitable programming offerings, meeting the needs of each child, whether they required remediation, English language services, acceleration, or their needs were met somewhere in between. When I arrived on this board, I was shocked that most in our community, and this was 10 years ago, were unaware of the deep pockets of poverty that existed in many of our schools. I was told by some in the community not to talk about these facts, but some of us continued to talk. We talked about two Fairfaxs, those whose needs were being met and those whose needs were not. I cited examples, as told to me by teachers, who were only English-speaking, and they had children in their high school classes with zero numeracy, zero literacy in their home language, and they were not fluent in English. We had a bit of programming for this, but we were woefully unprepared for the wave of newcomers that were filling up our classrooms without the skills needed to graduate on time. As I said, this was Fairfax less than 10 years ago. Today, we went from a pilot program at two high schools to much-needed and much-more-robust offering for our ESOL programming, not just in two high schools, but in all of our schools. And this year's budget is adding $5.2 million and 50 teacher positions for our ESOL staffing. We had and continue to have our youngest students struggling for kindergarten and beyond because they have had no pre-K experience. And we have had some good strides in this area, but much more needs to be done. Skipt was formed, and Skip must get back to prioritize its initial mission of school readiness through the creation of pre-K education slots. We started a pilot program with the County's Office for Children in five schools to have readiness when pre-K was not available, and now that program, that we simply called a Bridge to K, will be available in all of our schools this fall. And most recently, working to have an advanced academic resource teacher in every one of our elementary schools and a part-time advanced academic resource teacher in our middle schools to ensure that those children who may have not previously been identified will have the opportunity to be part of our advanced academic programming. These are but a few of the equity initiatives I am proud to have worked on with this board and previous boards, and we have made great strides, but we are not where we need to be. I've also found something troubling that has happened in the name of equity. Somewhere along the line, equity has become polarized. And when there are differences in options as to best achieve equity, and they devolve into name-calling or questions of one character, that process will help no one. Equity is not pitting the needs of one group against the other. Equity by definition is the quality of being fair and impartial. Equity is just and fair inclusion, and equitable society is one in which we all can participate and prosper. The goals of equity must be to create conditions that allow all, each and every one of our children, to reach their full potential. This is the equity I hope to achieve here in Fairfax County Public Schools. We have made great progress, but we have more to do.
Thank you, Mr. Dernat Kofax.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, my colleagues, I'll keep this brief, but I did want to speak to this as well as one of the founding members of the successful children and youth policy team. That was the initial beginnings of Fairfax County School Board and the Board of Supervisors saying, how do we get past the disparities and the disproportionality that affect our great county? And it did start with pre-K, and started with juvenile justice and student discipline, disproportionality and disparities. It has grown to so much more. It is through the skip, as Ms. Dernat Kofax noted, that the one Fairfax commitment was created, this emphasis on equity for all. As a social worker, the reason I went into that profession is because I so much believe that when we recognize the barriers of opportunity for students, when we then tackle those barriers and we create those supports, we have the opportunity for each and every child to reach their full potential. And so, from the remarks from Mr. Frisch to Ms. Kizgimara to my colleague Ms. Dernat Kofax, that is the beauty of what we are trying to do every single day. And I do want to give a nod to our Superintendent Braybrand. Under your leadership over the last four and a half years, you have also continued to make that your mission. You've made tremendous strides, particularly when it comes to student discipline, but there is so much more that, again, every single day, that's our commitment. And I just want to reinforce what Ms. Dernat Kofax said. I hope that we will be united in our support and our desire to see every child shine and to realize that this is never about taking something away from others in order to provide supports to those in need. And I really do think that we, through our work on this board, will continue to bring that message and hopefully that light that will make us a better county.
Thank you. I will go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. That is unanimous with Ms. Kizgimara and Mr. Frisch. Yes. Voting in the affirmative. A motion passes. Agenda item 2.05, National Board Certified Teacher Recognition. Tonight, we are pleased to honor the Fairfax County Public School Teachers who have earned or renewed National Board Certification for the 2021-2022 school year, and we recognize their dedication and all of their contributions to the education of our students. And I now call on Dr. Braybrand for the introductions.
Thank you, Chairman Bukarski. Good evening, everyone. It's really an honor for me to be able to celebrate tonight some of Fairfax's finest. We have premier educators here in Fairfax County Public Schools teaching our children, and tonight you are going to see some of the best of the best. I am going to ask, I know it's not in the script, but I tend to go off-script just for the beginning, I would like all of the folks who are going to be recognized individually in just a few minutes, all of you who have earned or renewed your National Board Certification, please stand and receive applause for a job well done. As FCPS leaders and accomplished educational professionals, your impact on student learning is unmatched. As reflective practitioners, you've enhanced instruction, developed advanced teaching knowledge, and continuously implemented best practices, all of which have led to our goal of educational equity, so that all children can achieve portrait of a graduate outcomes here in Fairfax County Public Schools. Since the National Board inception here in FCPS over 22 years ago, 515 teachers in Fairfax County have maintained National Board Certification. 221 of them are currently teaching in FCPS, yes, even after 22 years, and we're proud of their commitment and your commitment to continuous learning and striving to be the very best that you can be in helping us in our strategic plan to focus on student success. Our Office of Professional Learning and Family Engagement is proud to support those that seek initial certification or those that seek renewal by offering professional development and candidate support. And now Jay Naco, our Director of Professional Growth and Career Development, will come up and share a few quick highlights about the rigorous process that leads to National Board Certification.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I'm delighted to participate in the recognition of the accomplishments of these distinguished teachers, along with the school board, leadership team, administrators, and guests. The National Board Program was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to improve practices in schools. National Board Certification is the most recognized voluntary professional certification available in education. Teachers are certified in 25 different areas, pre-K through 12th grade. The teachers we recognize tonight have earned or renewed their National Board Certification by successfully completing a rigorous assessment program designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who have met standards based on what teachers should know and be able to do. The process is designed to assess a teacher's ability to put into practice the five core propositions which demonstrate that teachers are committed to students and their learning, know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects to students, are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning, think systematically about their practice and learn from experience, and are members of learning communities. In order to earn certification, teachers analyze their instructional practice and ability to meet the needs of their students, submit videos of their teaching, and provide student work samples that demonstrate academic growth, all of which are examined through a process of reflective analysis. At this time, I would like to introduce you to one of our newly certified National Board Teachers, who will highlight her journey to National Board Certification. Laura Osborne is currently Class Based Preschool Special Education Teacher at Rose Hill Elementary School. This is Laura's 15th year at Rose Hill and 17th year with Fairfax County Public Schools. Laura attended the University of Rochester and majored in Brain and Cognitive Sciences. For Laura's master's degree, she has a master's in Early Childhood Special Education from the George Washington University. Laura earned a certificate in Applied Behavior Analysis from George Mason University. You did a lot, Laura. Laura believes that all children can and will progress, and that each part of progress must be celebrated. Laura believes that children learn best through play and active learning, and Laura was a 2015 nominee for FCPS Teacher of the Year. Please join me in welcoming Laura Osborne.
My name is Laura Osborne, and I'm an Early Childhood Special Education Teacher at Rose Hill Elementary School. As a preschool teacher, I work with students during their first introduction to our school system and strive to instill a love of learning and trust with families, many of whom look to us for support in navigating the school system and advocating for their children with disabilities. I decided to pursue National Board Certification because I love teaching and I'm always looking for advice and feedback on improving my practice. Our program was one of the first to return to in-person instruction last year, and this process gave me an opportunity for deep reflection on the way we approach teaching our youngest learners. As I began to learn about the process, the five core propositions for teaching really resonated with me: being committed to my students and their learning, knowing my subject matter well, managing and monitoring learning, thinking systematically about my practice, and being a member of a learning community. I spent time really looking at student data and reflecting on what their progress looked like. I was able to take a deep dive into one student's learning styles, examining how that child learned best, and how my collaborators, both with other school staff and the child's parents, could influence the progress that that child made. I was also able to review videos of myself working directly with my students, thinking about decisions I had made and the ways I adjusted my plans in real time. Planning for these interactions and looking at the results has changed the way I think about planning materials for my students. When I'm planning for my students, I'm keeping in mind the why of the activity. It's not just an art project, but it will work on my students' fine motor skills. It will work on their ability to attend to an activity. It will work on their social skills and reasoning skills to figure out what they need and how to get it. Going through the National Board Process taught me to see how important it is to be planned, well-prepared, and yet still flexible to adjust in the moment as a student needs it. During the National Board Process, I had a lot of support from Fairfax County Public Schools. I took the National Board Candidacy Academy Course with other elementary teachers that were interested in earning certification. Over a year of classes, we became close and shared resources, ideas, and support with each other as we navigated the National Board's process. Jessica Stebbins, our instructor, was so helpful as she guided us through the components and helped us to think about how to keep equity at the center of everything we did. Through my school, I had great support from my instructional assistants, who helped me film and gave me the time and space to work on components with our students. I was also given a Fairfax County Candidate Support Provider, a nationally board-certified teacher, there to guide me and coach me through the process. I'm very grateful to Nadine Volkov Tivenov for being my mentor and becoming board-certified. I feel that this process has strengthened me as an educator and made me more deliberate in my teaching decisions. I appreciate the work I went through to gain certification, and I'm grateful to all that helped me along the way, especially my family, who supported me with meals and time to work, and my classmates in the National Board Candidacy Course, who all provided support and resources. I'm proud to be a nationally board-certified exceptional needs specialist working with Fairfax County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Osborne, for sharing your experiences with us. At this time, we will recognize teachers who have achieved National Board Certification. Honories, when your name is called, please come forward to accept your certificate and walk towards the raised dais and wait for the group picture. Dr. Braybrand?
Yeah, we would like to ask the school board to come on down to the dais to greet our National Board Certified Teachers, as Jay calls their names, and remain at the dais as we take pictures with our new and renewed teachers. And so, I will be presenting the certificates, and the school board will be greeting the teachers as we call their names. So, we'll do that right now.
Laura Osborne of Rose Hill Elementary School, Region 3, earned the Exceptional Needs Specialist Early Childhood through Young Adulthood Certificate with Principal Dawn M. Hendricks. Please give Laura a hand. Courtney Buchanan of Providence Elementary School, Region 5, earned the Exceptional Needs Specialist Early Childhood through Young Adult Certificate. Principal Dan Phillips.
Before we call our other teachers, the City of Fairfax School Board is here tonight, as you heard earlier, and the City of Fairfax has been one of the big promoters of National Board. I'd like those board members and Superintendent Dr. Pajardo to join this group down here to offer congratulations. So, please come on down and join the receiving line. Thank you.
We ask the new National Board Certified Teachers and School Board Members to remain on the steps for a photograph once they are joined by their fellow nationally board-certified teachers in a moment. Now, at this time, I'd like to invite Kathleen Waltz, Executive Director of Professional Learning and Family Engagement, to recognize those honories who have renewed their certification.
The following National Board Certified Teachers have renewed their certificates. Honories, when your name is called, please come forward to accept your certificate and walk toward the raised step and wait for the group picture. William McCabe of Lake Braddock Secondary School renewed English Language Arts, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood Certificate. Kristin McClure of Center Ridge Elementary School renewed Generalist Early Childhood Certificate. Daniel Miller of Fairfax High School renewed English Language Arts, Adolescence, and Young Adult Certificate. Corinne Pinkerton of Shrewood Elementary School renewed Generalist Early Childhood Certificate. Principal Josh DeSmither. Mary Beth Reedy of Shrewood Elementary School renewed English as a new language, early childhood. Mary Beth Reedy of Shrewood Elementary School renewed English as a New Language Early and Middle Childhood Certificate. Principal Jean Consola. Amy Wheeler of Sandberg Middle School renewed English Language Arts, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood Certificate. Additionally, we would like to honor the following individuals who are being recognized for renewing their National Board certification but were unable to attend this evening. Cosette Loach of Frost Middle School renewed Career and Technical Education Early Adolescence through Young Adulthood Certificate. Principal Anthony Harris. Jamie Mucciolo of Kings Park Elementary School renewed Generalist Middle Childhood Certificate. Principal Dottie Lynn. Congratulations to our renewed National Board Certified Teachers. At this time, we would like to invite Regional Assistant Superintendents, Executive Principals, and Principals to join the School Board for a group photo with the new and renewed National Would our Fairfax City Teachers, Fairfax City School Board, please remain for a special photograph? Fairfax City Teachers, Fairfax City School Board, please remain.
Yeah, you're done. Fairfax City's gonna take a quick picture.
Fairfax City School Board, Fairfax City Teachers, Region Assistant Superintendent and Principals, please remain for a special photo for Fairfax City. Let's give our National Board Certified Teachers another round of applause.
Again, on behalf of the Board, I want to congratulate this year's National Board Certified Teachers and thank them for their dedication to our students' success. Agenda Item 4.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School Board members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as a capital improvement program, budget, or boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that run counter to the spirit and letter of the school division's nondiscrimination policy. All statements should be directed to the School Board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. In-person speakers... As a reminder, speaker substitutions are not permitted. A speaker may not yield their time to another individual before or during their remarks. Shouting and outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. We are grateful to everyone who has come to speak to us today, and we thank you for your cooperation.
Our first speaker is Mark Spooner.
When I last spoke at one of your meetings, I noted that your new Social Studies curriculum focuses single-mindedly on issues of race, privilege, power, and identity. Now, you all obviously think that this is a marvelous way to teach history because you adopted the curriculum. So, I know I'm speaking to deaf ears, but I hope my remarks will motivate some who are listening to take a look for themselves. Finding the curriculum isn't an easy thing to do. It isn't published by the Board, and it takes time-consuming Freedom of Information Act requests for citizens like me to find out what's going on. I've tried to do that, though, and I've published some of what I've found on a website called What the public will see if they look is that the Board wants to spin almost every history and civics lesson from a perspective of bias, privilege, and identity politics. For example, the curriculum says that the story of our Constitution's drafting should be taught with an emphasis on, quote, "the concepts of power, position, and bias." Now, think about that. Our Constitution was the greatest achievement in governance in the history of the world up to that point, but you want to put a negative spin on it. And what's your point? That women didn't get the right to vote in 1787? Of course, they didn't. But society was different then, and to judge history by today's standards is woke-ism that does no justice to history. Likewise, slavery. Abolishing it in 1787 was not a realistic option. We wouldn't have had one country if it was a condition to doing that. That issue had to be postponed until later. What you are doing is awful erroneous stuff designed to divide...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Norma Margulis. Norma Margulis?
Good evening. My name is Norma Margulis. I'm a Fairfax citizen, Fairfax City resident, TJ parent, and taxpayer. Last month, failed Judge Hilton issued one of the most compelling and devastating indictments of your moral calibre, your professional competence, and your adherence to the Constitution of the United States. In his 31-page ruling, Judge Hilton, who reviewed the facts that you all agree upon, arrived to the inexorable conclusion that your actions were infected with racial balancing animals against Asian-American students. He also criticized you, your lack of implementing basic initiatives to promote diversity at TJ the right way, such as by offering a free, free-or-charge program to prepare students for the TJ test. Most importantly, Judge Hilton reminded you that you are not above the law, and your actions should be invalidated. Instead of abiding by his ruling, you, Ms. Bukarski, have stated the Board's intention to continue wasting taxpayer money by appealing, as if the undisputed facts will change. You, the School Board member who wrote to your colleague, Abrados Mesh, that talking about TJ was a stupid waste of time and the changes will whiten our school and kick Asians. Judge Hilton's ruling will prevail. I have no doubt about that, but I know that you're not listening to me, and I know that this is a farce. The reason why I came here is to see you in your eyes and to tell you, to ask you again to resign. You are responsible for one of the most embarrassing chapters in the history of Fairfax County Public Schools, and you will be removed.
Our next speaker is George Becerra.
Good evening, Chairman Bukarski, School Board members, and Superintendent Brabran. My name is George Becerra. I'm one of the co-chairs for your Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee. I'm here tonight to continue to talk to you all concerning the superintendent search, which will be nearly completed by the end of the month and amounts to made by mid-April of the first week back from spring break. First, please publicly post on Board docs or distribute a press release with the names of the organizations chosen to be on the community panel, just like the last two superintendent searches. Second, please use at least the same evaluation ranking form that HR has utilized the last few years or so for leadership team and other departmental head vacancies. I think if you can use this form to hire your staff aides, then you can use this form at least to hire a new superintendent. Anything less than this is doubling down on transparency and then moving backwards on community involvement and accountability. Asking the community to provide a list of strengths and weaknesses where each candidate has no real value. This would be like just checking the box. Third, Chairman Bukarski, please create a rule sheet prior to when you and the whole Board are in closed session voting amongst the candidates. No community wants a seven-to-five votes in favor of the new next superintendent. At a bare minimum, it should be a ten-to-two vote in favor of a candidate. This real behind-the-scenes vote is different from when the Board votes on TV, where the vote will be unanimous. Fourth, but not least, you are in control of GR consultants, which in previous meetings it sounds like they feel they are in control. They only advise, and you can do as you please. Remember, you do not have to hire anyone they bring forward if the candidate pool is not strong. If you are hesitant in not hiring a new superintendent, just look at what occurred within the Montgomery County Public Schools. They had an interim superintendent from within-house for over a year and a half before their Board made their final selection. Their school system did not break. The LT and FCPS can guide this ship, if need be, until the right candidate comes along or is proven. On a separate issue, if the Board is not going to appeal the TJ admissions court decision or receive a stay, then you need a solution ASAP. Using a full lottery for this election would legally work. More specifically, a lottery with students who have earned a minimum GPA of 3.5 and completed or are taking Out of Area One. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Bortner.
Ms. Madeha, before we go on to the next speaker, could we please ask Mr. Becerra to send his comments to you to share with the Board? Thank you.
Kristin Bortner.
At the last School Board meeting, one of you described what you saw at a recent school visit as "normal." I can appreciate how far we have come, but I was shocked to hear this, and it doesn't reflect reality. I will concede that seeming "normal" might depend on which school you visit. Had you visited my children's school, you might have seen children being taught to play Miss Mary Mack into the air instead of their friends' hands. This is not normal, as I know that you all know, because there was just quite a bit of adult handshaking in this very room a few minutes ago. Had you visited another school, you might also have met students who have never been to a school assembly or never taken a field trip. That is not normal. There is so much more to education than reading, writing, and math. I know this as a former educator, and I know you know this, too. Field trips and special activities are the things students remember forever. For example, my daughter's greatest sadness from being a kindergartner in spring 2020 was that she never got to see her sixth-grade buddy again. My son, who is now a kindergartner, has not been able to have a sixth-grade buddy. That is not normal. It is also not normal to prohibit parents from volunteering in the building, whether to assist with a 100th-day celebration or to stuff folders. It's not just about the help parents can provide to our amazing teachers, it's also about building community. It's critical for schools to have engaged parents who feel a sense of warmth toward their school. When you don't let parents in, you lose some of that feeling. That is not normal. We may not all agree on the appropriate time for a full return to "normal," but I hope we can agree that what I have described is not "normal." And yet, this is what you might see in many of our schools right now. Before declaring that normalcy has returned, I implore you to look back at your own childhood, see this thing to the actual finish line and not just the "good enough" line, and ensure all of our schools bring back the things that make school special. Your mission is not accomplished until this is accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Campbell, and I'm speaking tonight as Vice President of Fairfax County SEPTA. In last night's Public Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities meeting, data requested by their Student Achievement and Outcome Subcommittee for the annual report was shared. The data shared include the following two points. There are 714 alternative and augmentative communication users in FCPS receiving speech services. The average number of speech service hours per month for FCPSAAC users is 2.55. This data by no means provides a full picture, as it raises many questions. What does the distribution of those hours look like? How many students receive less than an hour a month, or just one or two hours a month, et cetera? And then also, what is the distribution of service hours across the different grade levels, and so much more? Understanding that these are significant questions that are necessary to provide a better insight, it is still abundantly clear that an average of 30 minutes a week of speech services for students who cannot rely on oral speech to communicate represents a significant systemic unmet need for AAC users in FCPS. FCPS demonstrates its awareness that learning a new language requires significant time and immersion through its elementary immersion programs and high school foreign language classes, both of which have significantly higher instructional hours than 2.55 hours a month. With the AIR study ongoing, we ask that FCPS instruct AIR to convene one of its 40 focus groups to focus on AAC users and families. We also ask that the AIR be instructed to review the service hours of AAC users to identify disparities and potential remedies for this population. Please see the attached list of data requests we will provide in our written testimony. The ADA requires that all people be provided access to effective communication. This Board acknowledged this in its AAC Awareness Month resolution in October 2021. For our AAC users, effective communication must begin with effective access to speech services.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanay Bouzid.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for making a public hearing for immigrants like me. Do you remember when you first were a candidate? When you worked, some of you worked very hard because they have a different background, and they worked super hard to get the vote. We, as immigrants, we worked the same thing, to get the care and the love of people. As a parent, I was shocked that my daughter, who is fully fine, she doesn't have any disability or delay, that she gets a special need referral. I did the best. I get the paper that my daughter, she's not... She doesn't have any speech delay. I know that my daughter is hunted because of the dispositionality that is within Fairfax County. As immigrants, we know that we have a lack of opportunities. We are deeply in the poverty, but our kids are the only thing that we work hard for. We want our kids to get the right services from reading, from supporting them to get a high level of English, instead of a referral. a high level of English instead of referring them to special need kids. I am urging you to open an investigation on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashra Nomaney.
For almost two years, I have been warning you, and we have been warning you. Today, you enjoyed yourself, didn't you, celebrating Equity Month? Of those teachers who stood here, did you see an Asian face among them? On your staff level over there, representing Fairfax County in this new, beautiful movement that you're calling equity, do you see any Asian faces over there? But behind me, do you see Asian faces? Yes. Am I an Asian face? Yes. Are you hiding our faces as you move your camera around? First, we were sitting there, then we're sitting here, and then you move your camera angle so that you cannot see the people, so that the people that are watching today cannot see us, because for the last two years, you have been trying to make us invisible. But a federal judge has ruled that in fact you are going to go down in history, just like I told you you would, just like the school board in Brown versus Board of Education, just like the counsel, John Foster, that you have hired to represent Fairfax County School Board in perpetuating systemic racism. That school board went down in history supporting segregation. It was part of the massive resistance that refused integration and refused movement forward, and that is exactly where you are. You are the new face of racism. I love your smirk, Scott Braybrand. I love all the shrugs you give us. That is the kind of disrespect we've gotten. I have here a copy of a book for each one of you, Race to the Bottom, and you are all in this book. You are all going to get, I've got a book for you, Karen Corbett Sanders, a book for you, Abraal Nation, a book for you, Stella Bukarski, because all of you have failed us. I will have all of these books. I hope you read them from cover to cover and see yourselves in the pages of history as failures.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Litten-Tid.
Nomaney, thank you. Would our next speaker please go ahead and come to the podium?
Jennifer Litten-Tid.
I don't know who this man is. Why is he standing there? Are you crazy?
Ms. Nomaney, thank you.
Tell me why he is there.
Ms. Nomaney, please take your seat.
Can you take your seat? Why are you...
Ms. Nomaney, thank you. Please take your seat.
No, Mr. Braybrand.
Ms.
You want to stop? You want...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tid. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us.
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. Please help us. Um...
Take a rest, because you don't want to...
Please, five minutes. We have a break. Thank you. All right. Without objection, I'd like the board to take a five-minute recess. There are 7.1 million disabled children in U.S. schools. Every one of them has a fundamental right to access education. They are not broken or expendable, but little humans who must be included. Anyone pushing for exclusion of disabled children by undermining the ADA is attacking all disabled people. Inclusion education is a human right enshrined by federal law. We will not go back.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vanessa Hall.
You don't, if you don't mind giving that to our board clerk, and she'll get it to us. Thank you.
Vanessa Hall?
Hi, I'm a little nervous. I'm not very good with chaos. Nearly two years ago, our, I'm sorry, can I go back? I, I'm just, I'm really nervous right now.
Ms. Madeja, please add five seconds to her time. Please give every single speaker the respect they deserve for their two minutes. Go ahead, Ms. Hall.
Thank you. Nearly two years ago, our world was upended, schools shut down around the world, and there were catastrophic numbers of COVID deaths and hospitalizations. We may be back to in-person school, but things are far from normal with nearly a million dead in the U.S. As a parent of two FCPS students, I want to thank you for listening to experts and educators and your exhaustive efforts to keep families healthy and our students educated, which likely felt like a Sisyphean task during this pandemic. At this two-year mark, I wonder how we can work together to make our public schools safe and equitable places of learning where all are respected. Divisive politics, rhetoric, and actions may have made this hard, but I hope that we can focus on students and quality of public education by appropriately paying and supporting our teachers, and if possible, reduce class sizes, work to reduce regional and school-based differences in all programs, make sure all special education students have the tools and support that they need for success, ensure that restraint and seclusion is truly a distant memory, ensure inclusion and representation of all students, no matter their race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration status, incoming or zip code, including in our books and our curricula, reinforce supports and protections for LGBTQIA and other vulnerable students to ensure that they're not targeted, bullied, or harmed. We've heard rhetoric in this very room that means this step is critical. Encourage critical thinking and activism by students so that they can use their voices to advocate for themselves and their families. Ensure the names and cultures of all schools represent FCPS values. We need to respect the past but work towards the future of equitable and quality public education with an entire community that pulls together to make it happen. And thank you all for all your hard work. Good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Walsh.
My son, Robert, took his life because he thought that all of the oppression was his fault. There were times he felt excluded because he had to use electives for speech therapy. His expressive language would be even worse while wearing a mask. You need to be inclusive to every student, be inclusive to those who have special needs or not, be inclusive to those who are masked or unmasked, vaccinated or unvaccinated. Every rice, every race, every life, every student matters. No one wants you to stop teaching black history, but please do not do it in a way that makes his life worth any less. My son was not responsible for everyone's problems. His success does not mean anyone else had to fail. His life mattered, he was important and valued. His emotional disability led him to the conclusion that any success he had, he did not deserve. Robert deserves more. Rest in peace.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Posey. Maria Posey. Our next speaker is Philip Lowe.
Thank you. I want to remind everybody of the terrible idea that you guys had by reintroducing after removing these awful books. I'm going to remind you with some of the excerpts from it, and I quote, "For years, my standard method of masturbation was stuffing a sock into the front of my pants and manipulating the bulge. This would involve hip thrusting while thinking of my latest gay ship. Memorably, I got off once while driving, just by rubbing the front of my jeans, imagining getting a blowjob." And she has little asterisks here. "I promise I'm really a safe driver, but I doubt it. It's kind of hard to drive safe when you're jerking off." Fast forward, we've been dating for two months. We've made out, we've had sex, we've moved on to sexting at work. I got a new strap on today. I can't wait to put it on you. It will fit perfectly with my dildo. You are going to look so hot. I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you the blowjob of your life. Then I want you inside me. Holy shit, this is the most turned on I've ever been in my life. I'm dying." Is this really what you want 11-year-olds to be reading? This is disgusting smut. Disgusting. I don't know what you guys are thinking. This is crazy. All you have to do is go through and remove these books. These are horrible. There are so many better books that can be in the school library. Huckleberry Finn, Tom Sawyer, those didn't even be that good. Just something better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Ma'am? Ma'am? Ms. Madeja, could you please call the next speaker? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shelley Arnoldi.
So I planned to discuss the budget. I know you're not supposed to, but I just wanted to bring up a couple of things, and then also some of the things that I just heard. I have to add some more. I was studying the 214 pages of $3.3 billion, and equity is written all over it. You guys are speaking about equity, but the one thing that's missing in all the budget is academics. The word equity is said 32 times. 32 times. Academics is mentioned once, so. Anyhow, so what I'm looking for is metrics. What are your metrics? You guys keep talking about equity. At the end of the day, what are you measuring? How do you know you're, you have equity? Because that's not equality. I see no measurements. It should be test scores and grades and academic success, and I don't see that discussed anywhere. There's no discipline. Equity, discipline, consequences should be the same across the board regardless. Nobody's talking about skin color or ethnicity. Kids are kids. Since I came here 10 years ago, because it was supposed to be one of the best school districts in the U.S. Come to find out, in 2020, I stay home with my children, and they're brainwashed. I don't even know who they are. And I can say, yes, I was working full-time, I missed it. But other parents missed it as well. All of a sudden, you guys are teaching them things that we don't even know about. So parents need some input. I had mentioned that before, surveys and input, but you guys keep talking about equity. It's equality, treating everybody the same. Nobody cares about the color of somebody's skin. Nobody cares. And poor or rich doesn't make kids good or bad. Smart kids can come from poor families. So if you want to help the parents, help the parents, that's great. We all want to support it. Nobody wants people to be poor. But you have $3.3 billion. You can support the poor kids and still support academic success among the kids that have means and no means.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Tonley. Steve Tonley. Our next speaker is Akshay Devarakonda.
Good evening, School Board. As an Asian American and as a TJ graduate, I applaud the Fairfax County School Board for the fall 2020 changes to the TJ admissions process. The TJ Alumni Action Group is appalled by the recent court ruling eliminating pro-equity admissions reform at our alma mater. The largest change prompted by the new admission standard was a drastic increase in economically disadvantaged students from less than 1% of the admitted class to 25%, which is much closer to the proportion of the draw districts. Moreover, the percentage of Asian students admitted out of all Asian students who applied last year is in line with historical trends going back at least 17 years, showing Asian students remain just as competitive under the reform system as during previous years. Not only that, but the current admission system is more accessible to disadvantaged Asian groups such as low-income Asian-American students, Asian-Americans who are English-language learners, special education Asian-American students, and more. We reject the insidious model minority trope that is used to promote Asian-Americans as a monolith and as anti-equity. It is used to lift up some groups and to throw others under the bus. TJ Alumni Action Group stands for all students of all backgrounds. Many Asian-Americans, myself included, proudly call ourselves progressive, not in spite of our Asian values, but because of them. We recognize that merit is not an individual metric that can be measured through outdated standardized tests, but rather a collective effort that forms when we form the diverse community of learners that the Virginia governor's schools speak of. School Board members, the other side wants to break your backs. They want you to cower down. It is not over yet. Do not give in and do not give up.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. We also have two video testimonies. Our first video is from Harry Jackson.
School Board, remember back to September of 2020 when you first addressed changes to TJ admission? You introduced the Fairfax community to a form of racism we haven't experienced before, vile progressive racism, the racism of holding others down. You proposed a merit lottery solution, which would have made TJ a mostly white school again, kicking out the Asian students from the community that were succeeding and doing well. When that didn't work, you went with the next best option, this current admissions process, which was recently thrown out by Judge Hilton. That admissions process, again, was to keep others down, and particularly, and I'll mention this, from the Black and Hispanic communities, from essentially disenfranchising gifted learners from the Black and Hispanic community by allocating seat quotas based off of a student's school of attendance rather than their base school. You certainly did not want the most talented within our community to attend that school. Certainly, you didn't want the Asians either. You've made that very clear in your statements when you are routinely vilifying, vilifying that community. Some of you failed to represent the interests of all your constituents. Fairfax is a diverse community, and we cannot tolerate racism. You should all resign. But before you do, you will be remembered as the racist school board. There is no doubt about that. Now you have to make a decision on what you're going to do regarding TJ admissions for the class of 2026. You should do the decent thing, which is revert back to the old system prior to September of 2020, which was race-blind, race-neutral, and bring the best that our county has to offer to the Thomas Jefferson School for Science and Technology.
Our next testimony was submitted by Jenna White.
Good evening. My name is Jenna White. I'm the parent of a current high school student in Fairfax County and a second student who graduated in 2016. The pandemic has been difficult for all stakeholders in our schools, primarily students, but also their parents and guardians, and school staff and leadership. Fairfax County Public Schools is and remains among the very best school systems in the state of Virginia and the nation by all measures. The great number of people in this county want our public schools to be successful and serve all students. Stakeholders must come together, set aside political considerations, and heal our differences. Alas, there are groups and funders outside of our community who promote week after week an ongoing crisis in schools. Have schools and our society suddenly become exceptionally bad? Of course not. The people, all people, of Fairfax County must reject this assault on our civic organizations and the continued attempt to mute pro-school voices. We have much work to do. Let's set aside the outside virulence and outrage and get to work. Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item 3.02, Superintendent Matters. I'll call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Pekarsky. Just a couple of things I wanted to share with you, and I know the hour is late, so I'll try to be very brief. First of all, it's National School Social Worker Week, March 6th through 12th, and we're celebrating our amazing cohort of school social workers. We appreciate their work in helping students achieve academic and personal success. School social workers are integral to our caring culture, and they work tirelessly and diligently to help promote students, families, school communities, and our students' success. So please take a moment to thank your social worker this week. And speaking of social workers, we have the National School Social Worker of the Year in Claudia McDonald, and we're so excited for her. She's from Limbrook Elementary. She's been named that National School Social Worker of the Year. She's been at Limbrook 10 years, doing an amazing job for the community, helping them with immediate needs, clothing, housing, food insecurity, and really helping counter chronic absenteeism in the school and giving every student the sense of belonging, confidence, engagement. So Claudia, congratulations. We're very, very proud of you. I want to talk a little bit too about summer session job opportunities. Yes, it's spring, and summer is around the corner. We will have job opportunities for the summer for teachers and administrators, paraprofessionals, and our operational support employees. So we ask all of our FCPS folks and those who are interested for applying for the first time to come and apply. We're going to have very competitive compensation, and we're going to, again, have a summer school two to three times the normal size so that we can reach and teach every kid and continue to address kids' unfinished learning. We also, speaking of opportunities, we have the School Bus Driver Job Fair tomorrow, and it will be held at Stonecroft Transportation Center, a $3,000 signing bonus, starting pay at $22.91 per hour that this board approved earlier this year and raised. Benefits, there's no pre-registration required. Again, go to the website at fcpse.edu and just put in "Bus Driver Job Fair." We're going to have one tomorrow and one on March 24th, and we really are asking all of you to come on out and drive a bus for FCPS. Speaking of bus, I'm excited to tell you that next week, FCPS will be partnering with the EPA at Flint Hill Elementary to recognize the addition of electric buses to our fleet. I'm not going to say more about it, because I bet a board member or two may have something to say anyway, so that's a teaser for later. And I'm gonna tee up one final thing. We are in the month of March, and March is Women's History Month. We are focused in FCPS on commemorating the cultural, political, and socioeconomic achievements of women. It traces its roots from 1857, when women from various New York City factories staged a protest over poor working conditions. And a couple of interesting facts for you to know. Women make up 74% of the FCPS workforce, 64% of our principals are women, and 50% of our leadership team are women. So I am very proud to work with some of the finest, and 11 of the 12 school board members are women. That's probably 90. I'm not a good mathematician. 11 out of 12 is like 90%. We want to thank all of our women at the board level, leadership team level, school principal level, instructional level, for their dedication to students, staff, family, and community. And speaking of strong and powerful women, it would be, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my partner, the Deputy Superintendent for Fairfax County Public Schools, Dr. Francis Ivy, who helps me daily run this school district. So, and honestly, I have the script, which I never look at because I tend to be unscripted. And at the end, Chairman Pekarsky, it says, "I would like to honor and thank the women of the school board." So I was going to say it, but you know what? So I was gonna say it, but you know what? You prompted me to say it earlier. Twice, saying it twice. Well, I'm gonna read it. I'd like to honor and thank the women of the school board. Each one of you is dedicated and committed to continuing the tradition of excellence, and you are incredible role models for all of our students. So on behalf of FCPS, our leadership team, thank you very much, and Happy Women's Month. That's it for Superintendent Matters.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. We appreciate that. Agenda Item 3.03, Student Representative Matters, and I call on Mr. Chadery.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. First things first, I just want to say to all of our students, student rep applications are out. Go apply, right? My advice to students who think they might be interested but maybe aren't sure or don't know if they would be able to make the time commitment, just go for it. This is such a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I think having the ability to elevate areas of need and affect change for literally hundreds of thousands of students, it's just unbeatable. And while I'm sad to know that I'm getting replaced, I also know that it is really rewarding just to see the level of talent and the substantive ideas that come from our student body, and this is really a chance to affect change. Last year, we had 121 students run. My goal is for us to beat that record. So if you go online to bit.ly/studenterp22, that's all lowercase, bit.ly/studenterp22, you can find the application and all of the info that you need. It is due, I believe, at noon on March 23rd. Additionally, as is the case every so often, I'm going to postpone some of our regularly scheduled programming in order to address some more timely matters. This was discussed at a work session on Tuesday, so I just want to ensure that my insight's not misconstrued in any way. I do not have concerns on the presence of MTSS in our schools. My concern has been around academic support staffing and how inconsistencies around it can lead to disparities in terms of the interventions that students get. Our former superintendent, Dr. Karen Garza, saw a deep value in the presence of systems of support advisors, and so she worked to secure funding to get one Sosa in every high school. SOSAs actively check grade reports, absences, teacher correspondence, and other data metrics to build and identify student support plans for kids who need help ranging from AAP all the way down to Special Ed. And SOSAs are currently universal in high schools, but they're not in every middle school. They've helped so many students, and the structure at the high school level is one Sosa per school, and deans of students are hired using principal salaries on an as-needed basis. And that role is really a missing piece of the puzzle because middle school is so often a place where these challenges arise, where students start struggling academically, often for the first time, and it is vital that kids are flagged and able to get intervention as early as possible before they start spiraling. I know so many kids who have struggled at some point and either feel like their school, A, never identified that something was wrong, even when there were visible problems, including major drops in academic performance, chronic absences, and visible depressive symptoms, or B, their school identified that something was wrong far later than they should have. I know that was something I experienced, and it wasn't until I had failed a grade, begun repeating one, and started missing more school the next year that my problem was noticed. And so I think really looking at early interventions is so critical for ensuring that things don't domino on students and that they're able to get that support early on before their problems really, really do affect their ability to succeed both emotionally and academically. Had my Sosa not come to Langley the year that she did, I doubt I would be a senior right now. One other issue that I want to bring up, I know there have been some concerns among the community and among faculty on FCPS's no-zero policy. Well, for that, let me give you a scenario. A student misses a test, and for whatever reason, they aren't able to make it up. They might have a job where they're supporting their family. They might have to watch siblings after school. They might be making up tests for other classes because of the days they missed. So that first test gets marked as a zero, and they then get an 80 on their next three tests, which they really study for and work at. Before the no-zero policy, their test average would have been a 60, which is an F. And so I consider it really vital that students are given the chance at redemption and passing even if they struggle early on. I'd like to note that if a student does nothing all year, they do still get an F, but this is really a lifeline for so many kids. And I even remember when I had been struggling with attendance and emotional issues, there came a point after the halfway mark of the year where I realized, oh, look, I have all these zeros, the quarters have ended, so I can't make up these assignments. Even if I try my best, I still won't pass for the year because of those first couple of marking periods, and it sent me deeper down that spiral. And so I think really having that infrastructure in place for kids, even if it, if there might be some kind of gaming of the system in hopefully limited circumstances, it's one of those things where the kids who it's helping, it's really, really helping. And I applaud Dr. Braybrand for staying true to that and holding strong, even if it's not the most popular thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 4.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. This is a portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These... Oh, well, I guess I skipped. My apologies. I skipped Agenda Item 3.04. Way too excited. Third Quarter Budget Review. Sorry about that. I'll call on Dr. Braybrand.
Budget approved. Thank you, school board. I appreciate that. But actually, a little levity sometimes is... Okay, maybe. I'm not a comedian, I'm just a superintendent, but you can try. Actually, we have our Chief Financial Officer here for our third quarter budget review, and I guess we can go over that for you and answer any questions, and just know we have it tonight for you, and we'll be glad to follow up as needed. And there is a, is there a work session? No, there's not a work session tonight, and then the next board meeting is final vote for action. So, Ms. Burden, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Chairman Pekarski, school board members, and Dr. Braybrand. And the third quarter review offers an opportunity to revise the current year budget, fiscal 22, based on trends and any new requirements that have become known since the mid-year in December of 21. The Agenda Item is organized with descriptions of the recommended changes, followed by an appendix that includes fund statements and some other information, and the data is as of the end of January. On Page 1, Item 1, for the School Operating Fund, there is one expenditure change totaling $12.5 million. The staffing season ended with a position balance resulting from lower enrollment than projected. The position savings are valued at $12.5 million. Savings from the Staffing Reserve are recognized at third quarter because any unanticipated staffing needs from now until the end of the year would utilize substitutes, not additional positions. But we do have adequate staff reserves should some unanticipated need arise. Item 2 reflects a transfer from operating of the $12.5 million to the Grants and Self-Supporting Program Fund to provide for the continued enhancement of summer school in fiscal 23, which is the summer of 2022. Again, total adjustments are $12.5 million. Also on Page 1, Section 2, is the Fiscal 23 Beginning Balance Summary. We have $21.9 million from the fiscal 21 budget and fiscal 22 mid-year to fund the beginning balance of the fiscal 23 budget, which is $8 million less than the current year's beginning balance of $29.9 million. On Page 2, the Other Funds Summary is displayed. There are no changes to the School Construction Fund. There are no changes to the Food, Nutrition, and Services Fund. The Adult and Community Education Fund includes a $318,780 increase in revenue and expenditures to reflect additional federal funding from the Adult Education and Family Literacy Act. Grants and self-supporting programs are also on Page 2, and they reflect the impact of new and revised grant awards totaling $28.7 million, plus the $12.5 million for summer school already mentioned, for a total of $41.2 million. The majority of the grant and supporting programs awards are primarily supplemental ARP funds for unfinished learning, HVAC, before and after-school programs, and these are just funds that are set aside for targeted needs that supplement our regular ESAR funds, and they are competitive grants. The summer school program resides in the Grants Fund and reflects the recommended funding of $12.5 million from the Operating Fund to provide enhanced summer school for the second year. Next on Page 4 is the School Insurance Fund, which is workers' comp and risk management. There are no changes to that fund. There are no changes to the Health and Benefits Fund, nor are there any changes to ERFC or OPEB. And the fund statements for each fund reside, again, in the appendix and reflect the changes that I've just shared with you. There's also some information on the Supplemental Appropriation Resolution, which just recognizes all of the changes that we did at mid-year and this third quarter combined. Then we include the Fiscal Planning Resolution, which the county government needs as part of our third quarter budget review. And then the last page of the document provides some summary information about the current year or fiscal 22 grants.
Thank you, Ms. Burden. I will call Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, I didn't want the evening to go by without personally thanking both Ms. Burden and Ms. Wiggington for your incredible work. Budgeting is an all-year affair, and they are constantly looking at ways of how we can ensure that more and more money is made available for those programs that directly impact student success, both academic enrichment as well as remediation. Last summer, this board supported increased funding for our summer enrichment programs. We had a very robust summer programming, but it did not have quite the subscription rate because I think the community was weary. We expect that this summer, we will have increased interest in our summer programming, and I hope that the board supports this allocation of the quarterly, end-of-quarter funding. I would also hope Dr. Braybrand and all of the leadership team that going forward, this intentional insertion of funding into our summer school programming needs to be done every year. We used to have more robust summer programming, and we pulled back from it during economic difficult years or difficult period. We realize that this, tonight, as we talk about equity, access to summer programming is important for all of our students. It is a game changer. And I also encourage those that haven't taken a look at our Summer Opportunities website, we are currently, all of the opportunities are posted, and I encourage people to look at those opportunities and sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Darnett Kofax? Okay. Ms. Tolan, I don't know if you wanted to share any comments?
I appreciate the opportunity, but I think Ms. Corbett Sanders did a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing as there are no other questions, now we will move on to Agenda Item 4.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. This is a portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I'll call on Dr. Anderson for a motion.
I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1-254B1.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? Please raise your hand. Okay, that vote is unanimous. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm looking here too. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay? All those opposed? And all those abstaining? Thank you. That motion passes. Agenda Item 4.02, Award of Contract on Loring Elementary School Architectural and Engineering Services. I'll call on Mr. Frisch for the motion.
Thank you. I move to, that the school board authorize staff to, one, renegotiate and amend the existing A&E contract with Samaha Associates PC to provide for the planning, design of the renovation and repurposing of the Dun Loring site to serves an elementary school; two, utilize funds previously allocated for planning, design, but the Fairfax Oakden School for such purpose; and three, authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer an amended A&E contract on behalf of the school board.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Tolan. Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak to this motion?
Sure. So, we have taken part in a painstaking process to get here. A year of research and discussions with staff and Division Council, several site visits, engagement with the community in the form of public meetings with facilities leadership. The results were a forum topic with broad community support that was approved unanimously by this board, followed by two CIPs also approved unanimously that confirmed our intent to move forward with Dun Loring. The most recent vote was exactly one month ago today. With such broad support from the board and community, we have certainly been keeping tabs on everything that's happening in the area. So when a civic association had questions about the project, Ms. Tolan and I worked with Mr. Plattenberg and his incredible team in facilities to provide a detailed response. I close with some excerpts from Mr. Plattenberg's response. "The location of the Dun Loring Administration Center is an ideal location to support planned residential development for the Tysons Urban Center and the Merrifield Suburban Center, which includes the Dun Loring Transit Area. The site itself is about two miles from the geographic center of the Tysons Urban Center. When considering the future impact of the Dun Loring repurposing project, schools with boundaries adjacent to Stenwood Elementary School are most likely to be impacted. However, boundary study scoping would collect feedback from the community on which schools should be considered." "Elementary schools nearest to Stenwood grew collectively by over 822 students over the past several school years. Five of these 10 schools, or about 50%, experienced a capacity deficit in five years prior to the COVID pandemic. Again, no boundary revisions are currently being planned or considered. That process is not slated to begin until 2026. This information is intended to provide a comprehensive context and rationale related to the Dun Loring repurposing." That's an excerpt from the detailed letter that Mr. Plattenberg sent to the community organization. "Our hard-working facility staff have an incredibly full plate. Any unnecessary delay can throw all of their work off track. This project has been vetted six ways from Sunday in excruciating detail, and this next step should be approved." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. I actually, if it's appropriate, I would like to call on Ms. Jessica Gillis from the planning staff to, she's attending the meeting virtually, to talk a little bit about the timing, you know, from her perspective, as Mr. Frisch just mentioned with her scheduling in this particular project. Could she talk about the timing of the vote on this?
Thank you, Ms. Gillis. If you're with us, please go ahead. Ms. Gillis, if you could hear us, please go ahead. All right. All right. Ms. Tolan?
Okay. Let me, I've got some additional remarks, so maybe while I'm talking, she can get on. I do want to really take this opportunity, I'm happy to be able to talk about this project. And I do want to acknowledge the McLean Citizens Association for, you know, asking us to really take a hard look at this. I appreciate the Citizens Association for always asking hard questions and always keeping us on our toes, you know, on many issues such as ERFC, budget, capital project work, et cetera. And here's an example. After getting Mr. Jackson's letter regarding Dunloring, I did ask staff to really go to work to help us understand even further why this project is important and, you know, how it fits in the greater work that we're doing in the Tysons area. What I was really excited about is when they came back with an explanation, some of which Mr. Frisch just read to us, is that the approach that they took in really looking at why we need to move forward with this project, even if the short-term numbers, which they very carefully had, you know, in the note to us, didn't necessarily, you know, look like we had capacity needs in those schools, those schools right in that area. We've been working, myself and Mr. Frisch, with several people from MCA, facilities planning staff, and board of supervisors staff, and we've really advocated to staff to take a hard look at development in the county as we look at projects in our capital programs. You know, those are things that, you know, haven't been necessarily excluded, but, you know, the analysis hasn't been as in-depth as we necessarily would have liked. So their explanation for Dunloring really is taking into consideration the development that we are projecting as a county in that Tysons area. We are also looking at improvements in overall facilities analysis, such as changes to the student yield formula, and lengthening the years of analysis in the CIP. And I do want to give, you know, credit where credit is due, you know, our citizens in McLean have really been pushing for this. The work is continuing. I'm excited to keep working on this and to collaborate with the Citizens Association, our CPD Committee, and our Facilities Planning Advisory Committee. I'm currently the liaison to that committee. You know, as we're looking at all of this, and we're also having some discussions about how do we make all of this more transparent and engage the community more in these discussions around these capital projects. So it's exciting work. You know, Jessica Gillis and her office have been working alongside us. You also may recall, we have three positions currently sitting in the budget that I hope will be approved this year to add people to her planning office so that we can continue and do this work even in more depth. Even with, if we move this item forward for the engineering on the agenda, you know, we'll continue to monitor all of our capital projects as we do, as they are moving forward, as we come out of COVID and, you know, deal with so much of the development across the county. And I'm sure I'm planning on holding staff, you know, to these new, more strategic and progressive ways of really looking at what our needs are. I did speak with Ms. Gillis earlier today, I do understand, and I'm not sure if she's available to us at this point. I know she also had a planning commission meeting tonight regarding the need to, you know, hopefully have us be able to move this project forward after this evening so that she can move forward with some of this engineering and planning and, you know, really take a close look at this. So I'll close with that.
There she is, Ms. Gillis. Can you hear us?
Hi, everybody.
All right, hi.
I apologize, I'm a little rusty, I'm gonna get back into it. If you're asking about the Dunloring project, and we're really set and ready to go, we're hoping that there will be action taken so that we can start meeting with the A&E firm and get going on the design of Dunloring. We'd like to keep this scheduled. We've had a couple other projects that we've paused on, and in order to keep going, we would really appreciate the board's consent on this or approval of the action. If there are any questions or concerns, I'm happy to address those if I can.
Thank you, Ms. Gillis. Ms. McLachlan?
Yes, thank you. My colleagues, I do want to know that it's, the timing's just unfortunate. When the McLean Civic Association President wrote to Chair Bukarski, the letters dated March 5th. The letter came to us yesterday on the 9th at 3:45 PM. I then reached out to Eileen Tolan because she represents that area where the Citizens Association is, because they wrote a very compelling letter that was almost three pages long and expressed concerns about the importance of adhering to analytical rigor, not allowing jumping of the queue, making sure we are focused on more pressing renovation and construction needs. And so, you know, I take very seriously when a civic association that's known as being probably the most engaged throughout the county alerts us to something like that, I just, I really wanted to understand what we're doing because in the end, for tonight, by greenlighting this thing, it is a $37 million elementary school renovation, and so we all hold a responsibility ultimately for the decision. I want to also express my apologies to our colleague Carl Frisch because this is in his district. Again, I don't handle this, I only can respond to letters we receive where they raise questions and concerns. So my series of questions, I guess, are these first. Ms. Gillis, one of the things that was cited in the letter of concern is that the projections looking through to '26, '27 is that the surrounding elementary schools are showing as under capacity. And so I just wanted to understand the staff rationale for why the urgency to design and construct this elementary school based on those projections.
So this project has been in the works for some time now, and I think that we're looking at this long range. So while the projections are going down, they're reflecting the current situation. So when we're looking at this project, we looked at this initially at another site, and when we started putting this into the Dunloring as an opportunity, we were looking broadly and more comprehensively about the Tysons growth area. We were looking at the surrounding schools to include Lemon Road, Timberlane, Westfriar, Westgate. And this is that 10 years, and I think Mr. Frisch spoke to this, but 10 years, these schools, or these 10 schools have been growing collectively over the past, I don't know, five to 10 years. So I think it's not much of a reaction as what the McLean Citizens Association has been showing. And we did provide a response to their concerns, but we're not sure exactly what the impact of Tysons development's going to be in our schools.
Ms. Gillis, I appreciate you noting that the staff did work quickly to turn around a response, and that was given to the board an hour before we went into closed session, which was at 4 o'clock today. So I read the staff response. I can't say that it actually helped answer some of my concerns, even your response just now. I always work really comfortably with data points. So is it your professional assessment that, that when this elementary school is scheduled to be completed, and what year is that? Oh, Mr. Frisch, are you gonna be able to help me?
I believe it's 2027.
Okay. So it's scheduled to be completed in 2027, but unfortunately, the projections right now show that all of the surrounding schools, from what I could pull up, aren't showing overcapacity. We do know that we've got capacity challenges around the county. Ms. Gillis, I also point out that from the notes, you know, the board passed a CIP, or the board presented a bond in November 2019, which thankfully the public supported. So it was just two years ago that we were asking the public to support an elementary school at a different site. I completely understand how we moved away from that within the last two years, and I don't have any questions about ultimately Dunloring site. But what's concerning to me is, once we build this school in 2027, if the projections that were presented to us by the McLean Civic Association hold out, we could be looking at a school and area schools where nobody even has the capacity needs, and how is that an efficient, effective way of opening and operating a school? Once we build it, we've got to utilize it because you have to have temperature control for the, you know, year-round usage of it. I'm also trying to understand how it came to us this way, and I think from a transparency standpoint for the public, the way I read this, you know, the motion before the board that was published a month ago, it just really didn't provide the clarity, I think. So it's to renegotiate the architectural contract with this firm. Do we know how much money then the board is essentially redirecting to do the architectural design and planning portion for this? Mr. Frisch, I'm so sorry.
It's approximately $2 million. I'm sorry, I'm having some trouble going back and forth. I appreciate your patience with me.
That's okay. So you said it's about $2 million, which I, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Which I know, that's pretty standard. And I, Ms. Tolan had said that if, you know, so they will design the school, and then as we continue to assess enrollment needs, and as you noted earlier in your remarks, we don't know what the Tysons development impact could be. So what is currently informing your staff based on the existing enrollment, and given we don't know what's happening in Tysons, that why the urgency, as you noted, to have this project start and?
If I could, I think Ms. Gillis may be having some difficulties, but I think that there's an urgency in the sense that we want to keep all of our projects on target. And so as we look at this particular project in its queue, we want to keep the design process on target for that completion date. And as we shared earlier, and as Ms. Gillis said earlier, and as you so aptly shared earlier, Ms. McLachlan, we've seen enrollment decreases across the county, and we've seen many of those students coming back this year, and anticipate more of those students coming back in terms of enrollment over time. And so this is the long game for us, to ensure that we have enough space within this region as we anticipate enrollment growths in this particular Tysons area.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for, you know, attempting to answer my question. I think where I'm really struggling, everyone, is that we have a civic association that presented us with a three-page letter with some very detailed analysis, and then in the closing, they actually suggest to the board that we aren't getting that done. Everything I'm hearing tonight still isn't explained to me, because I agree, we've had enrollment drops throughout the county, but the point of the matter is, we're about to build a new elementary school, and even our own staff projections going out to '26, '27 aren't showing that we've got, you know, a capacity need at this time in that vicinity. So one thing I'll share with you all, because I really don't like this to happen to any of us, and again, I had no idea that this really needed to be a conversation with Mr. Frisch. The hardest part is when we don't get something until the day before, and then we don't get information until the day of, it's really hard to know what's happening. So I had suggested that we have our FPAC, which the board specifically created FPAC, so that it could advise the board when we're in a situation like this. We've got, you know, analysis coming from the community, we've got staff giving us other information, and they're really not in concert right now. The beauty of FPAC is, none of us at this table are facilities experts, but we carefully selected them to do that. Ms. Gillis, the question that I will kind of put you or Mr. Smith on the spot is, I simply said to Ms. Tolan earlier today, where is the harm if we were to wait two more weeks, ask FPAC to do a quick review of the staff proposal for why this needs to get done now, as opposed to MCA's analysis that this isn't a good thing to be doing right now? And it would allow, I think, for us as a board to then not only vote with stronger confidence, but to demonstrate to the public that we vetted a staff recommendation that the community is saying perhaps we're not necessarily needing to do this right now.
So I would have to let Ms. Gillis speak to where we are with regard to awarding the contract with the RFP in terms of the process.
Okay.
To answer one of the questions about the overcapacity and the staff is not, the projections don't support the need, I would just like to note that only residential development projects in the Tysons vicinity and then the rest of the region, we only include projects, construction projects that have begun and that will have families residing in them to include the projection set. So if things are, if projects are under construction or proposed, those are not included in our current projection set, and that's part of the reason why we update them annually. So that's where we're looking at taking a longer-term project, and I believe Ms. Tolan mentioned that earlier, is that we're trying to take a longer-term project because our projections are not long-term, they're very short, they're very short-term projects, so we can't exactly do a percentage of the capacity calculations for 10 or 15 years out of the need. I just wanted to clarify that point. And then we're ready to go, our negotiations have been done with Samaha and Associates, and we're at the mercy of the board at this point.
Okay, so this is a little bit different from what Mr. Smith said, I just want to make sure that for board members and the public, we're clear. So there is not an RFP issue, it's just, we've hired the architectural firm, we would like to amend the contract that exists with them right now to add this additional $2 million project, correct? And the second thing is that I totally understand that we cannot include in our projections residential construction that doesn't exist right now. It may be in development, it may be in the midst of construction, but it's not there right now, so we can't build it in. But was MCA correct in their projections that showing up through '26, '27, and including the tables that your team also presented in response to MCAA or the MCA, we're not showing that we're going to be overcapacity in any of those area schools by '26, '27?
Right, with the unknowns currently.
Ms. McLachlan, this is what I would say. This is the superintendent version. Short-term, everything went flatter. The CIP you all just passed showed our overall enrollment flatter, in fact, slightly down. But Dunloring is a bet against growth in Tyson's corner. We believe that still remains the economic, one of the major economic engines, not the only one, but one of the major ones in Fairfax County and in that corridor. And we do believe that long-term with the, again, '26, '27 is three to four years, but five, 10, 15 out, we need the capacity there, or we're going to be back to the drawing board in trying to get the right capacity. So we do believe it's still prudent to move forward, and I understand really a couple of projects, we could go back and go.
And I, I, I understand really a couple of projects, we could go back and go, oh, no, the numbers are down now. Do we really want to start to pause on those? My personal recommendation to the board is, is not to. But I certainly appreciate the conversation tonight.
No, I appreciate that. I guess what I didn't hear from Ms. Gillis and your team is what would have been, given that this isn't an RFP delay, given that we already have the contract with the architectural firm, I still stand by my colleagues that I, I would prefer that we wait at least two more weeks, ask the FPAC to review it. Because, you know, Dr. Braybrand, I, I appreciate what you're saying. We already discussed what we know has happened with the pandemic. Staff projection numbers don't show us five years out from now that we're going to have students there to fill the building. And you guys, I just hope you understand, I just feel an intense responsibility that without information even from our own staff saying that there's a need there right now, that's what's giving me a lot of concern. So, you know, I appreciate your consideration of why we, we could use FPAC in this way because that's why we created them in the first place. But I'll, I'll conclude at this point.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen?
Yes, no, I appreciate FPAC being invoked because when we put this in the CIP two years ago, I was the liaison to FPAC and made sure in my capacity as the liaison to, to run these exact kinds of things by them. And they all concurred very much with our staff that what we're seeing, we, we all have seen this for years, I know your 10 years on the board, that we wind up being behind the ball and have to be reactive. We open a school like West Springfield High School and have it open at 106% capacity. We have Oakton that is going to be opening also above capacity. Because the way that growth happens and the way that we coordinate with the planning commission and how projects are approved is not in the same process as what we do it. Because to Jessica's point, what you don't want to have happen understandably is you have a big, huge plan development that then doesn't come to fruition, and you've built a school for that. But we know that is not the case. We have development that is underway in the area that is not just overburdening, will overburden that area, but the domino effect of the other schools in the area. New schools, when they open, impact all of our areas. We're all sitting, many of us, in districts with extremely crowded elementary schools. And, you know, I have hopes. I don't think this is going to be the board to do it, but that we will comprehensively look at boundaries in this county and make sure that we don't have schools where kids are sitting at 130% capacity and other schools are sitting at 92. So, you know, maybe some other boards will have more gumption to do that for our students. And we're going to need places to put physical bodies. So my frustration in hearing this tonight is where was this two years ago? This has been vetted by FPAC. It's been voted on by this body, not once, but twice, in two CIPs. And none of these conversations came out. And so the idea to me that we allow another community to say, hey, you know that project over there in a community that's not ours and doesn't impact our kids? Well, we don't like that. That mess, that, that, we don't like that. It's been sitting here for two years. It has nothing to do with us. But we're going to say, that's not fair because that takes resources away from us. That's not how we do business here. And I, I have to be honest, I find this extremely frustrating to have last minute a group come in and say, you know what? That's, that takes away from us. And I don't mean to disparage Ms. Tolan, the civic association, but I, I, I just, I, I really am concerned of where was the, where were these conversations then two years ago? Where were these conversations as we went through and looked at necessity? And where are these conversations when people are so aggravated to want school bathrooms or whatever? And we, and saying, why would you build this? Why would you, we have a perfectly good school site, ready and willing, that will in the long run cost us less money than Blake Lane ever would have. It doesn't have the issues that Blake Lane would have to take away some really much-needed community space. We find a compromise, and now two years, two CIPs later, we're having this conversation. So I, I apologize for my tone. I'm just very frustrated that I don't feel like this is how we work as a board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Maron?
Yeah, I have to agree with Ms. Cohen in that, in that it's been two years. And I'm just looking back over notes. And I mean, this is one of the first things that Mr. Frisch brought up as being a very creative solution to what was in a very complex situation over in Oakton and Blake Lane. I agree that we should not be waiting until our schools are maxed out before we're putting this in place. You know, I drive by Dunloaring School at least once a week. It borders Hunter Mill, and this area is a hotbed of construction. I mean, not far from this school site, there was a site in my district, there was an old preschool, got torn down, and seven houses got put up there. And from my time living and seeing development in Vienna, and particularly, sometimes I wonder how quickly the school system has been notified that there's going to be multiple houses put up, or, you know, family houses, you know, multifamily housing. So I, I fully support going forward with this. This is an art and not a science. And I've tried to learn more about it over the years with Mr. Plattenberg. But yeah, I'm all for us being accountable to our dollars. But I don't want to hold this up because I know how particular these timelines are.
Thank you. Ms. Kizgimara?
Yes, just, just briefly. As I recall, we received a overview of development. And, you know, developers can get approval for something, but that doesn't mean they have to act right away. And it seems to me that this was an area, and Ms. Gillis, perhaps you can verify this. This was an area where there's development allowed according to the comprehensive plan, but that may not be, they may not be underway. That's one concern. And I'll, Ms. Gillis, if you want to respond, then I'll make my second point.
Yeah, this area has been identified as an area of growth in the county, for sure.
Okay. So, you know, looking at the comprehensive plan, it's, it's sometimes very difficult. And, you know, I just kind of want to speak to Ms. McLaughlin's concerns, but also with the perspective that, you know, we could have things on the books that developers are not acting on right now, but we still have to plan. And that's part of the comprehensive planning process. So I'm glad to, to hear from Ms. Cohen that FPAC has looked at this. And overall, you know, FCPS does not have a lot of land available to itself to build schools. And so I think, you know, I, that's the reason I supported this initially. So I just, you know, I wanted the public to perhaps consider those ideas that, you know, unlike perhaps some other surrounding areas, we, you know, there is not land to buy to try to address all of the development that is coming in that particular area. So we sort of have to, in my opinion, use what's available to us. So I just wanted to, to share those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kizgimara. Mr. Darnakovacs?
So I do appreciate, though, this being pulled off so we could have a discussion about it. And, and I do have to say, I am, it gave me pause, the, the Citizens Association Group. But what's giving me pause about this is, and it, it's getting late, and I'm not certain I understand the process. But I have a school that I asked this board to approve two years ago as well that's been bonded on the Route 1 corridor with the same thing, with the embark situation where there will be growth, where capacity in surrounding schools isn't quite where it needs to be right now, but there'll be extensive growth there. And some members on this board called me selfish. They said I was selfish because I wanted to move this forward because there wasn't capacity in this area. So prior to this being pulled off, I was not thinking anything about this because there are so many things out there on our plate. And I just assumed that I may have missed this. But I want to make that point that I think process, I think we have to be respectful of everyone in this process. And if someone has questions, I think we have to allow them the time, even though we may be tired and the hour may be late. And I do want to remind my colleagues that I was very frustrated when I got the response back from, for the same reason, for a, a school that was bonded, that is there, that we have the land for, that we're not doing anything on right now.
Ms. Amash?
All right. Happy to follow some of my colleagues. I think there are a number of things. I was excited to see the, the work here. I know it's been done, you know, been in the works for so long. So I, I mean, I just want to ask some pointed questions to, to better understand kind of my position. I think, you know, my colleagues, you all know, when it comes to the renovation queue, when it comes to these decisions, I feel very strongly, from an equity standpoint, that we can't prioritize one community over another, that we can't just let some loud group or, or the attention of a board member to push things beyond something else in, in the queue, if there's a standard process for how we do that. I say that to, to point out my core values, but I, I'm trying to understand how that fits with this, given what Ms. Darnakovacs just said. If there's a high-needs area that had a school that's pending, why is that not in the works if this is now going to be elevated? And then I actually really appreciate Ms. Cohen's comments too, where I think, you know, the, the needs of a community are to be determined by those who are impacted and those who have the best interest of that community at heart. So can someone from staff, Mr. Plattenberg, Ms. Gillis, whoever, please clarify, is this being moved outside of the queue? And if it is, why?
This is not part of the queue. So the queue is the renovation cycle. So this, the existing schools. So this is currently used as an administrative site, and we're putting, we're repurposing it back into an elementary school.
Okay. So can you help me square that away with what Ms. Darnakovacs shared? And why that's the case?
I believe that the Dunloaring has, well, Fairfax, Oakton, and now the Dunloaring site showed a greater need for the capacity in the area for long-term with the growth and development cycles.
How, how do we define greater need? I, I, look, I'm not trying to be obstructionist. I actually, like I said, Mr. Frisch did bring this to us a while back and had a conversation with us. But I, I do want to understand that, just to make sure that I'm making a fair and informed decision tonight based on that. So, yeah, can you please elaborate on what you mean by greater need?
So currently, and I, I'm not exactly prepped for this, but currently in the, where the Route 1 elementary school is located, there's sufficient capacity for the development that's proposed. And the time of, timing of the development, there aren't any applications that I'm aware of for development in that, in that immediate area. So it wasn't as a greater, great, as seen as a greater need, I'm sorry, I have no English abilities tonight, as Dunloaring with the development in the Tysons and the Silverline metro area.
Okay. And, and how do applications make their way to you? Can you help me understand where? Because I'm, I'm just thinking, maybe in a, maybe in a high-needs area with particular obstacles, there may be other barriers to elevating that to the same level of attention? But if you can help elucidate that a little bit.
I think I need clarification on what you're asking about and how you're defining high needs. I'm, are we talking about capacity needs?
No, sorry, sorry. I, I was, I was referring to the, the site Ms. Darnakovacs was referring to. But if you can just help clarify, when you say there were no applications, what would the process have been for the community members to bring that as a concern?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about development applications from the county for developers who would then build residential unit.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, like I said, I'm always eager to support initiatives brought by my colleagues. I think this one just remains as a question mark based on some of what was raised. My sensibilities tend to be founded in fairness in these decisions. And I, I don't know that I feel entirely confident based on today's conversation with where we've landed. So I, I'm, yeah, I am really sorry that I'll probably be just abstaining. And again, I, I was trying to distill, like, is this a curveball that's being thrown to sabotage a good initiative here? Or is this a genuine concern of an oversight that, albeit late, might be worthwhile? And I don't know that I have the information today to make that determination. So I hope nobody takes this personally, but I, I won't be opposing. I, I'll just be abstaining.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. So a little bit of history so that I can better understand how we're here tonight. This is the planning process that is, we're authorizing for the substitute of the Blake Lane site. So the Blake Lane site was on the 2019 bond, if I remember correctly. And in 2018, in the run-up to the 2019 bond, there were significant concerns by the community that a treasured park would not be converted over to an elementary school. But that there was a need for an elementary school in that area. Then, because of an absence of available space and a recognition that repurposing a building would be more effective and more efficient, both from a cost process because of the availability of land, and frankly, also just better to repurpose than to build new. This, as written in the, that Mr. Frisch has brought to the board, is really to allow for the planning and design. And prior to an actual build, it would have to come back to this board for approval. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And this process usually takes, if I remember correctly, at least a year and requires significant public engagement. Am I correct?
Yes, about two years for planning.
Two years, okay. So two years of planning, which will also mean going out to the community and understanding what the community in that area and those communities that could possibly be sending their children to this school would be, their views would be, they would be engaged in this process, right?
Correct. In addition to a design committee, we also have been increasing our public engagement with community meetings. And we've been, in the past, use the PTA organization in their meetings, and we'll continue to do that for school engagement. And then also additional meetings for the community.
So I would encourage that the committee would also be expanded to include residents of the immediate community that may or may not be sending kids to the school because obviously the design would impact that community. Having said that, so we're two years away from this board making a decision on the actual build, right? At least?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So this is an, I think it's really important for the public to understand that this is a iterative process. And it begins, and, and I fully understand and appreciate Ms. Darnakovacs's comments about the school along the Route 1 corridor because that too is a school that needs to have a more public discussion. And obviously, I will support her in bringing that to, to a greater discussion amongst our colleagues. But in the case of this, I, I don't think that we should stop a process that has already been ongoing, that has had significant discussions amongst the community, amongst the board. And frankly, because of the whole discussion with Blake Lane, it had significant conversations with people all up and down the, the governance chain, including, if I remember correctly, even Congress- including, if I remember correctly, even congressmen getting involved in it. So I think that this was a, you know, obviously, it, it's been a long time coming, and there's been a lot of discussion about this. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin? Please, Ms. McLaughlin, I apologize, Ms. Seismar Heizer.
Thank you. I appreciate this, and I appreciate the chance to speak. I remember when Mr. Frisch brought this two years ago, and brought it to our attention as an at-large member. You know, he and I had many conversations about Dunloring and the repurposing. And what I really found exciting about this process was it was really forward-looking. As Ms. Cohen said, there's often times when the best planning that we do in our CIP, it's still not as forward-looking as I think we can be in that process of continuous improvement. And especially in a place like Tysons, where there is change happening so quickly in some ways, and there is so much growth and development coming in. Some has been approved, some has already started. But the CIP, from my understanding, only takes into account projects that have already begun. And so it makes it more difficult to plan. As one of my colleagues said, this isn't art as much as it is a science. And so what I appreciate is the last two years of being able to talk to Mr. Frisch about this, to talk to our facility staff about this. I remember Blake Lane as a point of conversation, even before I was on this board. And then conversations with facilities about using Dunloring to help with some of the projected growth, as well as some of the thought of growth with what's happening with Tysons, and how rapidly it's changing. So I think, for me, as an at-large member, I feel like I've had the time to ask the questions I need to ask and to get the information. And I actually appreciate this new process as a way to potentially not dig ourselves out of a hole, but plan a little more proactively. Planning longer term, of course, adds more uncertainty, because it is a longer-term planning. But I think it sets us up better for potential success in addressing capacity needs, rather than planning for capacity needs, and by the time we finish the build, already having to replan, because our projections didn't take into account potential changes. So I just appreciate the process. I appreciate the chance, as an at-large member, to have my questions asked. I appreciate, as always, the reach-out from the McLean Civic Association, other associations. But I think many of these questions, at least for me, were addressed. I also recognize that, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic had a huge impact on our projections and our ability to do projections. And so some of these projections that I think are being discussed, when we're talking about this membership, are short-term, affected by COVID. And it's unclear, to me, whether those are the projections, like the baseline going forward, or if it's going to sort of go back, as things go back to normal, to where we were before. So I will wrap up by saying, I appreciate this process. I think it's a good path forward to looking at our CIPs going forward, and our projections, and our development. And I will be supporting this.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I just wanted to go back for a couple of things. One, you know, I, I appreciate concerns cited by board members. I did not read the letter as the McLean Civic Association saying that they feel we're taking money away from their communities, and that's why they want to fight against this project. I, I didn't read that at all. They did quote back to us on page five of our, or they cited it on page 14 of our CIP, that "The school board has established the following set of guiding principles, that constructing new schools only where surplus capacity or existing school inventory are not available in order to maximize limited capital monies." And so I agree very much what Mr. Frisch has done as a tremendous advocate for Providence District. I agree with what Ms. Seismar Heizer said, that we want to be forward-thinking. I love the idea of repurposing a building. I absolutely do. It's just, honestly, you guys, I will just say this. My goal here tonight is that, too often, our board is unfairly mischaracterized in the public. And sometimes, there's no basis for the criticism. Other times, we have self-inflicted wounds. And the only thing that was concerning me this evening was, only two years ago, you know, and two months, we had said to the public, correct me, 15 months ago, two years and three months ago, we asked, said to the public, "We want to build something at Blake Lane." That was in the bond. So while I appreciate that, that Mr. Frisch, coming on the heels of Ms. Palczek, said early in his tenure, "Hey, you know what? Blake Lane really isn't going to be the spot." But anyone who knows this area, which Mr. Frisch knows it better than anybody, they're not in the same place. And that is made clear. Over near Blake Lane is one portion of the district. Over in Dunloring, very different portion of the district. And so I would push back gently on my colleagues in saying that we talked about this for two years. We vetted with this public for two years. I do agree, Mr. Frisch works tirelessly for Providence, and he probably has had those conversations. But honestly, tonight, staff's responses, and still trying to explain the important ones, on where are we for capacity needs in the Dunloring area for the next five years? I'm still saying, where, where was even F-PAC coming to us and saying, "Hey, you know what? We're good with, with you changing this from Blake Lane to Dunloring?" And that we, as to Ms. Cohen said, we constantly monitor. Well, two years ago was two years ago. Now we're where we're at. And I, no one from staff told me what was the harm for waiting two more weeks on greenlighting a project that will ultimately be $37 million. So at this point, I'll just tell Mr. Frisch, I'm so sorry, because I believe in magisterial deference. This has nothing to do with his great work. I'm just really disappointed in where staff left us. And I'm disappointed that we aren't utilizing F-PAC to help us understand where we are right now, not two years ago. So I, I will be abstaining.
Madam Chair, may I recognize to make a motion, please?
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to call a question, please.
Okay, all those in favor of calling the question? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a second. Somebody's seconded.
Second.
By Ms. Cohen. All those in favor of taking the vote? Calling the question to take the vote? Okay. That is, wait, I've got to count. Put your hands up high, folks. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, we will go ahead and put that motion on... Oh, two-thirds? That's true.
Did you count me?
I sure did. I sure did. Okay, can those who are no, please put your hand up? Yeah, there's, nobody? Oh, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you go ahead.
Yes, I will be very brief. It's my understanding, we keep asking about the role of F-PAC. Is Mr. Plattenberg?
No, no.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, maybe Ms. Gillis can answer this question. I, I believe that the F-PAC reviews our CIP on an annual basis. Is that correct?
Yes, F-PAC reviews the CIP.
And part of that review is not only for new builds, new construction, renovation, everything that is in the CIP? Am I correct?
Correct.
And so did they, was this project in the CIP this year?
Yes, this project has been in the CIP for multiple years.
Okay, and so there has? So there has been a review by F-PAC of this project?
Yes, as part of the CIP. I don't know about any discussion that has been had about specifically this project. They've had discussions about Fairfax Oakton Elementary School in general, that I'm aware of.
So they have had Fairfax Oakton as part of their discussions?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's nobody left, unless Ms. Tolan? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tolan.
So first of all, Ms. McLaughlin, I'll take full responsibility for you feeling, you know, that you received the information late. We, I was working with staff on, you know, what was the rationale behind, you know, this whole thing? And was trying to have a package for you, with, you know, the letter from McLean and information from staff. So I apologize. I'll take full responsibility for you feeling, you know, that you got the information late. You know, I am currently the liaison to F-PAC, so I will 100% take this back to them, you know, to take a look at, and make sure that they're fully informed of all of this. Mr. Frisch and I did have the conversation about, you know, there's, even with this new look moving forward, I think it's a much better way of doing our planning and looking at the needs. You know, honestly, you know, part of the reason we really embarked on looking at, at all of this and pushing this forward is really, really needing to pay attention to McLean High School, the overcrowding at McLean High School, and Marshall, sitting right there in Tysons. So, you know, I, I feel strongly that what we've put in place, and we're starting to move toward, is really a much better way of doing our planning, which, as I expressed earlier, you know, is excited to see this in writing, you know, from staff in their reply to the Citizens Association. Given the conversations that we've been having around what's happening in Tysons, you know, I, I think we're going to need that school there, and I think it's in a good location. Mr. Frisch and I did talk about the fact that, you know, as Ms. Corbett Sanders was saying, this is iterative. You know, we may get a little bit down the road here and see, you know what? Even though we, we recently met, I hope you did meet too, with the Fairfax County, you know, Tax Authority, and talk about what's happening with development across the county. You know, they're seeing issues with, you know, drop in use of commercial spaces, but they did not see any, any issues with residential construction. It's all still moving forward. And so we are seeing a lot of construction and residential construction occurring in the Tysons, you know, McLean area. So we're going to have to pay very close attention to it. So, you know, I guess I'm feeling like I would like to see us move forward with looking at that elementary school. And we're going to have to keep looking to move forward in having serious discussions about those high schools. You know, where are those kids going after elementary school? And, you know, we already are, are seeing, you know, issues at both McLean and Marshall High School. You know, separate of that development. So there's lots of big conversations that need to be happening. So, you know, that's my explanation and where I'm coming out on this.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan, and I appreciate that you had the opportunity to sit down with the McLean Association, hear their concerns, have that conversation. I do believe staff was with you, or?
So, so just so people have a better understanding, we've been meeting, you know, periodically, of course, when things like Omicron happen, et cetera. You know, we've, you know, met in fits and starts. But we have had a group of people meeting from the McLean Citizens Association, myself, Mr. Frisch, we had representation from the Providence Supervisor's Office and the Drainsville Supervisor's Office. And, you know, really dug into the development and the proper information. And I will give the McLean Citizens Association, you know, credit for really pushing us to look at that and really pay attention. And, and incorporate that into our planning process. And I know, you know, Jessica Gillis has done a lot of work within her office, and, you know, people in her office have been in those meetings with us as well, having those discussions, what are we looking at? How are we doing this? What do we need to change? One of the things that happened is, you know, in conversation with Ms. Cohen and our work with CPDC, last year, we worked with the same staff team to look at the student yield formula, because that was kind of our next step. You know, when we were looking at, how do we move forward with this? The student yield formula kept coming up. Do we even know, you know, what number of students are coming out of different types of buildings? Right now, we just use the same formula for every single type of building and across the entire county. So staff has done some great work in looking at that. And it hasn't been presented to the whole board yet. It's, CPDC is currently looking at it, talking to people in the county about it, talking to the Planning Commission. I recently had a meeting with the Drainsville Board of Supervisors. We're going to do this in detail here. So there's been a lot of work and a lot of effort that's been put into these changes. You know, do we need to pay attention to the data, and do we need to look at it? Absolutely. So I'll be happy to continue my collaborative work with the McLean Citizens Association.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I appreciate that. And colleagues, I saw this letter yesterday, when, when you all saw it as well. And I know we've been busy, and it's been, you know, many meetings. So just wanted to share that, that soon as I saw it, you all saw it. And I want to say thank you to Ms. Tolan for forwarding that. And with that, I think we're ready to go ahead and take the vote. If we could have that motion on the screen in front of us, please? All those in favor, please raise your hands. That is... Okay, very good. All those opposed? All those abstaining? And that motion passes. Thank you. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Seismar Heizer for Agenda Item 6, the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda Item 7, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. The new business items are on the screen. I will turn it back to Ms. Bukarski.
Okay, excellent. Agenda Item 8, Board Committee Reports. I'll call on Ms. Kizgimara for the Comprehensive Planning Development Committee update, and then Mr. Frisch for the report from the Public Engagement Committee.
I'm coming. Alrighty, CPDC met on Monday, February 28th. We had two primary topics. We talked about student yield and proffer recommendations that staff has provided. They've done quite a bit of work and proposed some changes to the methodology used to determine student yield ratios and proffer updates. From there, they will be having additional conversations with the county. And pending those conversations, bring it back to us so that it can be submitted to the full board. Secondly, we discussed considerations for the Planning Commission's Facilities Community Outreach Plan. There's been quite a bit of change with respect to the process, with respect to how the Planning Commission is handling things that impact the schools. And so we need to identify how we are outreach into the community with respect to new construction, renovation that does not go beyond existing footprint, renovation with additions and repurposing, as well as 2232 practices. And so we have, the CPDC had that discussion. F-PAC will be looking at that and making recommendations, and then we will bring it to the full board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kizgimara. Mr. Frisch?
I'll make this quick. We had an extremely productive Public Engagement Committee reading this month. We went, we have a, I'm going to preview a little bit. So I'm probably getting out of my skis. But we had a, we have been working on, for the last two years, little bells that ring whenever you're talking. I'm kidding. We've been working on a, an operating manual for our advisory committees. And we have a working draft. And we, as a team, our committee members went through about half of it at the last meeting. And we anticipate that we will finish reviewing it at the next meeting. And then it will be sent on to the board for a well-deserved work session. So very much looking forward to that. So, very much looking forward to that.
Mr. Frisch, you may want to turn off your phone next time. Thank you. And with that, Dr. Anderson, oh, wait, we are at... Yeah, Agenda Item Nine? Excellent. Oh, Board Matters, okay. Dr. Anderson, we'll start with you.
Oh, okay. I did not know we were already here. I, I'm changing my comments a little bit because I want to focus a little bit on what was said today, just to inform everyone that earlier this week, the board reviewed two goal reports. The first was student success and the second was caring culture. In reading, the performance of our students was reported at the meeting on the scorecard and it says follows. Asian students, 86%. Black students, 66% in terms of those who are passing the SOLs. Hispanic students, 48%. White students, 86%. Economically disadvantaged students, 48%. ELL students, 21%. Students with disabilities, 46%. The math scores showed even greater discrepancies. These scores, to me, are the reason the work of FCPS focuses so intently on equity. Clearly, certain groups of students are not performing like other groups and it is this division's responsibility to find out why and to engage in intentional efforts to close those gaps. Equity is giving students what they need, when they need it. A question was asked tonight about metrics. When will we know that we've achieved equity? That's a very good question. For me, it's simple. Equity will be achieved when all of the reported groups are performing at levels that are comparable to each other, not with these wide gaps that I've just shared about. Because our students are talented and these talented students show up in every category, in every demographic, in every subgroup, which the divisions are required to collect, by the way. Until we reach that point, I will continue to fight for this division to expand opportunity and to provide access, remove barriers, which result in the data I shared earlier. The work of equity is taking away from stu-, is, oops, sorry. The work of equity is not taking away from students who are performing well, but it's not also being satisfied that our students who are black, brown, poor, those who did not begin their schooling speaking English or those who have special needs do not perform well. It's being dogged about pulling them forward so they can realize the FCPS promise. My remarks that I had planned were around the middle school configuration meetings for students and for parents and caregivers. The first meeting unfortunately was this evening, so I was not able to be there. But there will be two more opportunities on Monday, March 14th, at 6:00 PM and at 7:30 PM. And there will be one additional meeting that will be shared very shortly by the Office of Communications. Thank you to those families who have responded and have shared their concerns about not having sufficient time in order to engage in those meetings. So please watch out for the survey that will be distributed later this month. Thank you.
Ms. Barron followed by Ms. Tolan.
Sure, just briefly, I've had some progress to report about some of the traffic safety issues that have been happening in Hunter Mill and regarding the McNair Elementary School, which is on that busy Fox Mill Road. We've had some really great progress thanks to our partnership with County Supervisor Walter Alcorn and the county offices and there's going to be crosswalk changes, adjustments to parking enforcement. So it's really heartening to see that, you know, how parents, you know, when they inform, you know, the staff and us that we can work together to figure this stuff out. So that's a really great thing that's happening. I also am really glad that this week at, in Central Office, a new staff member started, our Special Projects Administrator, who has that Master's in Public Health that I very strongly advocated for in the fall. So I'm very pleased that the superintendent has gone ahead and hired that person to help us in this era of living in a pandemic and ensuring that other services such as our special ed services that are in that same office of special supports get their, you know, focus of work and it's not overcome by, you know, pandemic and health-related things. And lastly, next week on Wednesday, I'm hosting my next community conversation about outdoor learning and it's going to be featuring Westfield High School and Forest Edge Elementary School, both of which are in the process of creating an outdoor space. And this goes along parallel with work that I'm advocating for in partnership with other board members for more outdoor learning, more access to, you know, academic learning outside and looking forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, after our last discussion, I do want to take just another opportunity to thank the McLean Citizens Association, as I mentioned, for keeping us on our toes and discussing things thoroughly and, you know, trying to have an understanding of, you know, the reasons we're making the decisions that we do. And I look forward to continuing to collaborate with them on all these issues. Ms. Cohen and I met with the Facility Service Employees Advisory Council earlier today and it was a wonderful meeting discussing the need for efficient, properly maintained buildings and the pressures, you know, they are feeling to accomplish this. I want to thank them for their openness and willingness to work with us, to come up with ways to continually improve our recruitment and retention of facility staff and other topics. I was happy to participate in the Langley PTSA meeting just a few days ago. It was, we were remembering that, I think, the last PTSA meeting that I went to that was live was at Langley High School. And here we were, two years later, almost to the day, able to meet in person. So what a wonderful change that was and I thank them for the invitation. Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Zuluaga sat down with students and parents last night at an event hosted by the McLean Citizens Association at the Community Center and just had a real, very nice conversation about questions that the students had about things happening out at the school. So I thank them for being out there in our community. Next week, I'll be out at Hutcheson, Chesterbrook and Gray Falls Elementary School. And I'm super excited to spend some time at McLean High School to see some raising student voices presentations. The students have come up with specific ideas about how to improve the culture at their school. And so we'll be hearing some of those. And I'm touring the bathrooms at McLean High School with someone from our design and construction staff to, you know, take a look at, you know, what we need to do to make those bathrooms a little bit more comfortable and add some privacy. So that will be interesting. And the Spring Hill Elementary School Fun Fair is next weekend. So let's all hope for nice weather and get out there to celebrate Spring Hill. Dr. Brayman mentioned on Monday, we are expecting a visit from the Administrator of the EPA. He's anxious to promote the use of electric buses at schools across the country and will show off one of our buses by giving him a ride around the block in Vienna. He'll meet with her transportation team that runs our electric bus fleet. But most importantly, he will meet with Flint Hill Elementary School Green Team members and Madison High School Climate Club students. So that will be fun on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin followed by Ms. Dernette Kofax.
Great. I just want to share with my colleagues that I'm going to be sending two emails tomorrow because you just didn't get enough work this week. But one exciting thing and is a perfect segue or a representation of our commitment to equity and that is Inova Health Systems, their Director of their Community Health Programs, has reached out to me and asked that we, as elected officials, help them with getting their Community Health Needs Assessment Survey out to our community. They've been doing this since 2013. It has really helped them in particularly under-resourced communities get better care, which we know is so important. And so the survey information that I'll send to you, that I hope you'll share in your newsletters, the survey's open now and closes March 31st. It's in nine different languages. It's not a complicated survey, but it does ask our residents to provide input on how they feel their health needs are being met, what their health needs in the community are to be. And it really has yielded some incredible results to, again, help in particular our under-resourced communities. But it, Inova, as we know, was such an amazing partner in helping us to stand up and vaccinate our employees so quickly. And I think this is a wonderful way where we can live our values of One Fairfax to really help reach our community. So I hope you'll give consideration to that email that you will see tomorrow and take advantage of the final two weeks of March. Secondly, I wanted to make you aware that on Tuesday, in talking with Dr. Braybrand, and it was a good discussion, but I need to give you guys just a heads up, the, some in the community had made us aware that we had shifted our AP exams due to Eid. And while the board wasn't aware of this, the decision was made in the fall to switch them off of May 3rd and move them to a later date. Then when it was realized that Eid really needed to be recognized as a O-day on May 2nd, that's when the community came to us more recently and expressed concern. While Dr. Braybrand had said that we wouldn't, we wouldn't adjust May 2nd and we would go ahead and as planned, and certainly knowing accommodations for our students who are going to honor that holiday, what wasn't clear is that the May 3rd changes still exist. And the only reason why this concerns me is that College Board sets these exam dates and then provides for these students a makeup day for illness, personal conflicts, whatever it is. So for May 3rd, that solution now exists. And, and I think we've got to figure out what to do for our students so that everybody's going to have a makeup day of some kind for, for May 3rd. So I'll be copying on that email tomorrow.
So on Thursday, March 17th, I will be holding my Lead District Budget Town Hall with Supervisor Lusk and Lee Burden will be attending with me. Thank you, Ms. Burden. And that will happen at 7:00 PM. I want to congratulate Claudia McDow, who was named the 2022 National Social Worker of the Year. Ms. McDow is a school social worker at Lynbrook Elementary School and I want to thank her for her commitment and dedication for positively impacting the lives of our students, family and staff at the Lynbrook Community. I'm hoping our board will be able to meet her in person so we can honor her further. And finally, the Hayfield Secondary School are basketball champions and they will be playing in the state basketball championship Class VI game tomorrow, March 11th, at the Seagull Center on the campus of VCU in Richmond. Game time is 2:30, so I send my best wishes. Go Hawks.
Ms. Cohen followed by Ms. Kiesgahmara.
Man, after tonight, I don't even know where to start. But I'll say, I spent Tuesday at a funeral for a man whose entire life motto was "More Joy." And he worked to bring joy into everybody else's lives and the only thing he asked in return was that they share it with their community. In contrast, that with the ridiculous behavior tonight at this meeting, and I just, I honestly don't know what to say. The example that these people who are coming here are setting for our children, for their children, for my kids, you're bullies. You're nothing but middle school bullies. Grow up. Make some joy. Spread it around. Volunteer in our schools. Help our teachers. I'm sick of it. You come here and the whole, your whole job is to disrupt, cause turmoil at a school board meeting. For goodness sakes. Enough. Enough. On a positive note, we have teen job fairs this weekend in the Springfield District that I am co-hosting with my supervisor, Mr. Patrick Harity. On March 12th, from 1:00 to 3:00 on Saturday at West Springfield High School, please bring your teenager or have them come and we will have loads of opportunities for them to learn about all of the amazing things that they can do during their high school careers and beyond. FCPS will be there and hopefully some of your kids will want to come back and be a part of this incredible school system in a lot of different ways. Then on the 19th, from 11:00 to 1:00, we'll be at Chantilly High School. I might even try to rope my colleague, Ms. Pekarski, into coming and we'll really like to see you all out there. Have a great weekend.
Ms. Omech followed by Ms. Corded Sanders.
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that some of the work...
Oops.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Ms. Omech, I think Ms. Kiesgahmara.
Yeah, that's fine.
Did you want to speak, Ms. Kiesgahmara?
I thought you called my name.
I did, I did. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you. I do want to support some of the comments that my colleagues have made. It's unfortunate that the word equity has taken such a beating. And I meant what I said in my comments, that equity has no color, has no race, has no sex or gender. And so I look forward to working with our community to emphasize how important it is to really get to know all of our students so that we can do the best that we can to serve every child by name and by need. I know that all of my colleagues believe in that. That's what equity means to us. And so, you know, I look forward to greater understanding in our community. I do want to thank my colleague, Ms. Tolan, for inviting me to the FPAC retreat a few Saturdays ago and I enjoyed that very much and meeting all of the committee members. On that same day, I was able to participate in an enslaved people's burial ground ceremony at the Bull Run Marina where they had discovered a newly discovered burial ground through using radar, et cetera. It was, it was actually quite moving and, you know, I encourage people to, to visit it. It's a beautiful site overlooking the river there. I was also able to participate in the South County High School Democratic Mock Primary where they had candidates to pretend to run for president. They debated and showed their knowledge of world and domestic events and I, our future is in good hands. I, we, I already mentioned the CPDC meeting and so I have one event coming up in honor of Women's History Month. It's, it's a leading ladies' roundtable where I will have guests from our legislature to talk about the policy landscape that impacts our schools and communities. So I hope that you can join me or folks can join me on March 21st from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. It is virtual. Thank you.
All right. I just want, I did want to thank Ms. Tolan for her work in helping with some of the bathroom situations that is going on that I heard from constituents about. Not the most, I don't know, palatable subject to talk about, but, but certainly important to our kids. I, I thought last week we had a really productive conversation with the Board of Supervisors over the budget. I think this is an exciting and successful year, so looking forward to further development there. I also wanted to recognize that actually, in the National Board Certification cohort for this year, just like last year, I was pleasantly surprised to find one of my teachers and actually this time too, one of the ORDs was my teacher. In fact, taught every one of my siblings and I wanted to shout out Ms. Cassette Loach from Frost Middle School. I mean, all of our staff are absolutely incredible in what they're putting forward and especially in such tough years. But I do remember, you know, her as someone who actually would stay after school just to give me extra lessons on things I was interested in and that I was passionate about. And, you know, she left a mark on our family and I want to recognize her and certainly celebrate all of our staff who were recognized today and are all over our county doing exceptional things and really investing in our kids and their dreams. So I was really pleased to see that. And then just building off of a little bit of what some of my colleagues said, it takes a lot of hard work...
it takes a lot of hard work to build something, to invest in a system that we have over so many generations, and that is able to maintain a $3 billion budget and do these incredible things, and have people like Ms. Loach and all the staff we celebrated today, and almost nothing to destroy it overnight. And this is really, you know, an opportunity for us to be leaders, to demonstrate our character, to model for our kids what we think is going to lead us forward in a more productive way. You know, there were some implicit comments about kids who are less talented or, you know, who aren't worthy of certain opportunity. And I think it's essential for us to sit with that implicit bias and really unpack how we're perceiving different groups in our community and what they represent in our stereotypical assumptions perhaps that, you know, are not necessarily ones to blame ourselves for, but that are a reality of how we've been socialized in today's world. So I wanted to call that out, and hopefully, that can be a constructive moment for all of us to do some self-reflection. And just a reminder that lifting one group doesn't mean one other group goes down. When we lift one, we lift all. It's our progression as a community to move forward together. And along those lines, and hopefully, in the spirit of building young leaders who recognize that and who advance us forward, I'm really excited to be joining a number of our students in the Virginia Peace Awards this Sunday, where we're going to be celebrating many of their initiatives in doing just that, in building a community that is better for all of us. And I'm sure some of my colleagues will probably show up to that. And then also looking forward to rescheduling our town hall with Partov in the coming weeks. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, and Ms. Omech, I will be seeing you on Sunday at the Peace Awards. They're one of my favorite events of the year. I want to echo the cheering section of Ms. Darnak Kofax for the Hayfield Boys Basketball Team that will be competing and winning against Battlefield tomorrow at 2:30. And congratulate also two other high schools that Ms. Darnak Kofax and I share. Both West Potomac High School and Mount Vernon High School are honor bands yet again this year, so we're very excited about that. We're also excited about the work that we're doing on our outdoor gardening in the Mount Vernon area. Silverbrook Elementary now has two new outdoor learning spaces, and the benches were built by the Boy Scouts. And so it's very exciting what they're doing there. And also exciting about the South County High School students who have started a new program where they are volunteering at the senior centers in the community. And it's really that intergenerational work that, and partnerships, teens helping seniors and seniors helping teens, that make a difference and create better understanding and appreciation. And kind of follow up on Ms. Cohen's comment about the importance of volunteering and getting involved instead of just adding to commentary that may not be supportive of our excellence in our community. I also am looking forward to, on the 24th of March, we will be having a, speaking at the Leadership Class for the Mount Vernon Lee Chamber, and am very appreciative that the focus of that will be on career and technical education and workforce development. And on the 23rd, Supervisor Stork and I will be having a town hall on the budget. And I want to assure people that there is a commitment from both the Board of Supervisors and the School Board to work collaboratively, and we understand the importance of not only ensuring that we have the resources that make our community the best community to live in, in the state of Virginia, but also that we make it affordable. And I think that the conversation about what the new effective tax rate is continuing to go on, and it's one that I think everybody at this table shares, a recognition about the importance of lowering that tax rate based on the increase in assessments. On March 19th, we have a Stuff the Bus activity throughout Fairfax County. I urge people to look on their, on the website and find a place that they can go and help out our neighbors in need. And finally, I will be at... Okay, I want to thank, I want to thank our HR Department for working with Fort Belvoir for the plans of the Military and Transitions Job Fair, which is scheduled for May 11th. And the last thing, if you don't mind, is a plug for the brand-new tutoring program that Dr. Braybrand, I know you and your team have just been incredible, incredibly dogged about making sure that we have these services available to our students, and these on-demand services ensure that we are able to meet our students where they are at. So thank you.
Ms. Sazmohyza?
Thank you, and I just wanted to start by thanking the Lake Braddock Select Singers Chorus for singing tonight. It's probably fairly unusual to have two Lake Braddock Chorus parents sitting at this dius, but that is what we have. So it was very nice to see that, and I know Ms. Cohen and I celebrated hearing them play, as well as on Tuesday night, when we're sitting next to each other at the Lake Braddock Chorus Concert, watching our children perform. So, and speaking of performances, I just wanted to give a shout out to some of the performing arts that are coming up. It's really wonderful to see our plays back. So one per each region. Madison High School is showing the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, April 28th to 30th. Please go check it out. Region 2, Marshall High School, a year with Frog and Toad, which sounds actually very fun, April 27th to May 7th. So check that out. Region 3, West Potomac High School, you have Be More Chill, which looks like a Mountain Dew label. And I'm really excited about that one, April 20th to 29th. And then Region 4, West Springfield High School has A Sound of Music, which brings back my childhood, April 28th to 30th, May 7th to 9th. And then finally, Region 5, Fairfax High School is doing Into the Woods, April 28th to 30th. So that last weekend of April, you can spend your entire time at the theater. So please go do that. I wanted to say, you know, a shout out also, I know Ms. Darnak Kofax mentioned our wonderful social worker, School Social Worker of the Year Award. I just wanted to give a shout out to, one of the wonderful things that she's done is, she recently helped provide Lynbrook families who've been displaced by apartment complex fire with food and clothing and transportation so the children could still get to school. She worked with the crisis team so staff at the school could learn how to best help the children as they dealt with that fire and the trauma that it caused in their life. So that is just one of the many, many wonderful things that she has done, and it's a well-earned award. And I want to just mention one last thing that came up at our work session, and there was recently some Instagram posts and an Instagram account that had some very anti-LGBTQ posts on it at one of our schools. And I really appreciate the Pride Liberation Group and some of the students at this school who talked to me, and the quick action of the Principal, Dr. Smith, in addressing it and working with the students. And I say this to lead into our conversation about a welcoming atmosphere, about inclusion, about making all of our students feel safe, and about equity. We are a school system, we are a public school system, where we educate all of our students. And we educate all of our students by providing them what they need, when they need it, by providing them the tools that they need, by each student, as Dr. Braybrand says, by name and by need, so they can be successful in the areas of their strengths and passions and interests. And we cannot do that if we do not have a welcoming and inclusive environment where every student is valued. So I appreciate our caring culture, I appreciate the work the previous Board has done, this Board has done, our staff has done, on ensuring that welcoming, caring culture where each child is met by name and by need. Thank you.
Well, I've had a wonderful and extremely busy last two weeks, and, you know, I don't want to define normal for anybody, but I will tell you, this week at Center Ridge Elementary School, I was watching first graders singing and dancing while they were learning how to tell time. I was talking to high schoolers at Thomas Jefferson about the satellite they're building and about the research they're doing on the mold that's growing on the, one of the monuments downtown. I was at Mountain View, listening to the conversation of ESAL students about the Ukrainian conflict war that is happening before us. I was at Bull Run, playing Literacy Fun Land, and, you know, it seemed pretty normal to me, but that was me. It was wonderful. Kids are learning, and there's really great things happening, so I'm happy that I've been able to get out to so many schools, and I'm continuing to try to do that in the next coming weeks. I did have a great Budget Town Hall with Supervisor Smith, and thank you to Ms. Wiggington for being there. I know lots of our fine arts students are having their pre-assessment concerts now, preparing, so I got to attend some of those, which was wonderful to hear our kids and how they've been progressing this year. And I'm sorry that I won't be able to make the Peace Awards due to a family conflict, but I will say, if there ever was a time that we need our young people to step up and talk about how we work through conflict together peacefully through respect, man, it definitely is now. It is now. So with that, thank you, everyone. It is about 10:50. Meetings adjourned.